Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU-16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU-16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU-16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU-16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU-16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU-16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more.
Oh, thank you folks for waiting. I wanted to open the...
The mics are really for the TV, not for the room. So we'll just have to try to speak a little louder. You vote.
So I want to open the Exeter Planning Board meeting of Thursday, January 12, 2025, and it is 7:18 PM in the Noack Room of the Town Office Building located at 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire, to consider the following. We start off with approving minutes. I will table those for this evening. So the... Excuse me. And yes, before we do that, I also want to introduce the board. I'm Langton Plummer, Chair of the Board this evening, and to my left, this is left.
Aaron Brown.
Gwen English.
Nancy Belangez, Leckwood Representative.
And to my right.
Jen Martel.
Marty Kennedy.
Dean Hubbard, Alternant.
Sam McLeod, Alternant.
We had Dave on there.
And Dave Sharplez is here on the screen. That's his name anyway. We'll see his face again.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Right.
Okay, so I believe this upcoming case of Willie Creek, that we have a couple people, members, that wish to recuse himself.
That's correct. I'm a resident of Ray Farms, so I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I'll also be recusing myself.
Thank you. So the application of Willie Creek Company for the site plan review of site plans, lot line adjustment and wetlands, and shore land conditional use permits for the proposed relocation of Building D for the Ray Farm condominium development and associated site improvements off of Ray Farmstead, Ray Farmstead Road. Subject properties are located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District and identified as tax map parcel number 47-8 and 40-47-8.1, Planning Board Case Number Do we have someone that will...
Could it, Dave?
Dave?
Could it, Dave? Ask him if he thinks it's ready for acceptance.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. So, Dave, I think we can ask, is the case ready for your acceptance, for our acceptance?
Yes, in my opinion.
Thank you. Then I would look for a motion to hear the case, please.
Okay, I make a motion to accept Planning Board Case Number 22-3 as identified by Lang Plummer previously, for acceptance for review.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. A voice vote is okay, so those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Abstentions? Okay, we're all set.
Did you appoint Sam as a voting member?
No, I haven't... I need to appoint Sam and Dean as acting members this evening. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six of us, as I count. Thank you for pointing out.
You're welcome. It's been a long night.
Vice Chair, very important people have handy. Okay, that being taken care of, floor is yours, I believe, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Plummer, members of the board. My name is Tim Phoenix. I'm an attorney at Hopeful Phoenix, Gormley &amp; Roberts in Portsmouth. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Willie Creek Company and the property owner CKT Associates and Ray Farm LLC. With me on their behalf tonight is John Shaftmaster, who is the principal of those entities, and Bill Blackett, who is John's... worked with John on those matters. Sitting next to me are Kat Morrell and Eric Botterman from Millennium Engineering, who's done the technical work here and prepared the plans. They will be addressing the issues. Also with us here tonight are Ed Ford, Attorney Ed Ford, and Attorney Chris Hilson, who are representing Mr. Shaftmaster and his entities in matters involving pending litigation with the town of Exeter. I'll be very, very brief before turning it over. More for the newer members and/or members of the public who wouldn't know. The history of this application is that the area in question was the subject of a four-building condominium project some years ago by Mr. Shaftmaster and his companies. Four buildings were approved. We'll call them A, B, C, and D. D, which is the subject tonight, was originally approved over near the mobile station. That has not been built. Buildings A, B, and C were built, condominiumized, and are now occupied and operated by the Condominium Association. The matter before the board tonight, which actually started some years ago, originally with applications before this board, is to relocate Building D at the, if you will, the far end of the Tiff Road that is presently paved and developed. The Tiff Road was... The area was deeded to the town some years ago beyond the paved portion, crossing wetland where it connects with Mr. Shaftmaster's company's land. There were variances issued for use, which are pending at the moment. And before the bill... The board today are, if my notes are correct, are four pending matters and their respective sub-matters, which are a multifamily site plan review approval, conditional approval, a lot line adjustment, a CUP application for wetlands, a CUP application for shore land, and there are a number of waivers and motions, requests pending, which include waivers for school impact fee and a recreation impact fee, and a reduced recreation area motion. With that, I will turn it over to Kat and Eric to proceed with the application before the board.
Hi, everyone. Tim, thank you. This application previously came in front of the board in 2022, and we've done several different revisions to it in the cross time between now and then. As Tim mentioned, this project proposes to take... Hold on. There it goes. Didn't want to turn on. Sorry, my apologies. Proposes to take Building D from a location, excuse me, down here along the roadside of Epping Road and place it up in the back corner of this lot. In order to do that, there are a couple of things that have been suggested and are present in this application. And so the first primarily is to create a lot line adjustment to allow land to be added to the existing Ray Farm LLC lot by taking land from two different CKT Associates properties and combining it in. And that gives us this final kind of outline here that comes down and around, back out to Epping Road, and then closes. The second thing that happens with this proposal is Building D is accessed by a private driveway extension from Ray Farmstead Road. This connects to the existing road using the town right-of-way by providing 50 feet of public road before tapering the driveway from 20... From public road standard at 28 foot wide to the private driveway standard at 24 feet and carrying that up and around. I'll go forward a few sheets here. I'll go forward a few sheets here. Additionally, comparative to the original project that was placed in front of the board in 2022, the connection between Building C and Building D for formal access has been removed and is now just a paved walkway to allow residents to access Building D or the trails in the center here that sit behind Buildings A, B, and sit between all four buildings. The access also contains two different points of entrance and egress, and this is a feature primarily for emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicles will be able to enter from this side and then turn around completely without having to back, which promotes safety throughout the traffic turning. At this time, I'd like to turn it back to the board for any questions or comments and to allow the meeting to continue.
At this point?
No. No questions at this point?
No questions, so let's continue.
What is the proper way to continue?
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Do we want to go to conditional use? Like, what do we go to?
Well, go through what you're doing with the crossings, the wetland and what have you, and then...
Sure.
Can you use the microphone a little closer to it yourself?
Yeah, I can move the microphone in.
Very good, yeah.
So we'll go back to this overview plan. So as far as utility goes, and utilities will continue from the Ray Farmstead access, there are two... One large wetland crossing that crosses two different wetland areas that we'll discuss here, but I think the easiest to start with is the utilities. And so utilities will continue off of Farmstead Road. I like this one the best. They'll traverse up the center or the sides of the road, depending on the utility, before they connect out into Building D and be stopped in the driveway, so that if future development were to happen with adjacent lots, there is the ability to connect to town water and sewer allowed for that lot. There are also two conditional use permits that are a part of this package. The first is a wetland conditional use permit, and so this is the wetland buffer plan where you can see the impacts. These impacts are entirely reduced to the direct wetland crossing that is off of this Ray Farmstead access drive. This is the preferred crossing by many of the entities involved. It entails roughly 1,800 square feet of direct wetland impact that will be permitted through the New Hampshire Standard dredge and fill process. And then additionally, there's wetland buffer impact in the surrounding areas as we come across this crossing. This crossing is developed to bring the roadway up to a drivable grade, as well as provide a better crossing for the actual wetlands themselves. So out here, right now, there's a corrugated metal pipe crossing with about six feet of top over it, and what is proposed is a five-foot-tall by 14-foot-wide open-bottom box culvert, which is better for the environment as far as the species go for crossings for any type of wildlife.
So that's an open culvert on the bottom?
Yep, it'll be an open-bottom-box culvert. And that process will be evaluated and reviewed again through the state permitting processes as well. The second conditional use permit is for the shoreline. And so the shoreline impact here is brought in by Watson Brook. Watson Brook is identified on the USGS map as perennial up until that culvert, ironically. And so that's how it's been delineated. The shoreline buffer, because of that, kind of wraps around, and you'll see it wraps back toward Building A and toward the portion of Ray Farmstead Road that's already been developed, and then also continues up into the area next to Building D. Building D has been located so that it is outside of the shoreline impact area, and largely what's inside of the shoreline impact area are stormwater management elements, which will be temporary in nature, as they'll initially modify the grade that's out there, and then they'll be stabilized as sloped and revegetated at the end of the process. As a part of this... As a part of this, also, you'll see pavement in those impact areas, and that's to serve the parking lot that comes up and around the building, and then also the back end of the access drive that loops back out to allow for this connection. On Tuesday night, we were in front of the Conservation Commission for their recommendations on both the shoreline conditional use permit and the wetlands conditional use permit. The meeting was very productive. We actually were able to go on a sidewalk beforehand with members of the board and then discuss a couple of the things that came out of that meeting. We are going to evaluate... So there was a supplemental filing to the conditional use permits, and it's not shown on this plan set. Let me grab the correct plan set so that we have the right reference. At the meeting with the Conservation Commission and after the sidewalk, one of the big takeaways for us was to reevaluate this area and impact up in this section. So this is an intermittent stream portion of the site. There are a couple of existing crossings that are there that are man-made. So there's a boardwalk that was put in, and then a two-by-four constructed, almost balanced bridge that the mountain bikers who use the area have added in there. And the goal of this is to kind of smooth out and make a walkable path. In our conversation with the Conservation Commission and kind of reviewing the area that's out there, we are going to evaluate this impact to try and reduce it as best as possible, and also provide a trail system that better fits the natural features of the area, potentially by wrapping around the boulders that are there or the significant trees that are already there as well, and then as well as creating a trail system that kind of fits in with what's established out there and doesn't look like it's so out of place in the woodland. As far as the shoreline, the recommendations from the Conservation Commission for the shoreline permit were to try and reduce, you know, any type of the shoreline impact that we can and pull it away, as well as some standard requirements for the revegetation of the areas to go along with this. We are still in the process, and part of the reason why we're asking for conditional approval tonight is we are in the process of trying to evaluate the amount of parking that is required for this building, because the state recently passed legislation that reduces the required amount of parking spaces for multifamily developments. And because of that, we believe that with 36 spaces under the building, we can reduce this lot size, and in doing so, pull some of this permanent impact away from the shoreline and make it, again, a better end product for all involved, in the users and also the So those are your shoreline impact and wetland impact overviews. I did hear a question about the plan that better shows the building layout and parking configuration, so I'm going to pull that up really quick to have a quick discussion So this is the overall building site plan that shows that on-the-ground parking lot pre-reconfiguration. So you can see some of the elements that are in here. This building is the exact same as the other three buildings that are present. It's near identical to Building C, and the architectural plans are provided, but this has a basement parking structure for 36 spaces and also houses the utility room. Internally are the mailboxes in the first-floor lobby, so there's nothing sticking out for that type of service. Residents and emergency vehicles will be able to access the site from either the right driveway or the left driveway, and we've also partitioned two on-the-ground handicap spaces for accessibility into the building using the front sidewalk. And then, as part of the town's standards for sustainability and planning, we've allotted two spaces to be transformed into EV Go if seen fit in the future. This driveway, again, is 24 feet wide. The alleyways are 22 foot between the two spaces, and you also have 23 feet between the front sidewalk and this wall that is here for accessibility standards. And then here's the greater lookout of the direct site for the utilities and kind of seeing how these utilities are phasing in. So at the fire department's request, we're looking at relocating this hydrant to be just outside the edge of pavement so that it's easily accessible for them and readily available. You can see the drainage network that's coming under this parking lot, as well as the water line that's coming into the building and then also out to that hydrant area. And then we have underground electric and cable coming in and a natural gas line that wraps around the back of the building that will eventually be able to plumb into not only the building, but also the patio grilling area that's present for the site. New to this plan set from April is the draft of the landscaping plan provided by the landscape architect for some different elements to be able to see kind of an idea of what the species lists are in the foliage. This will be incorporated into the main plan set, and my intention before final is to add some color so that we can see some of the differences of how these are going to set in and look with the final community. And then in the event that anyone would like to see, this is the turning detail for the fire trucks to show that they can make the turn, to come in and out and get back onto Ray Farmstead Road, albeit I'm not the best digital driver, and the fire department is much better than I am at that particular instance. I'll leave this on the site overview, and then if there are any questions, we can go to those.
Excuse me, did you say the planting plan was only up here? It's not in our packet?
No, it's in your packet.
Oh, it is?
It is in the packet, yeah.
I think I missed it.
Okay, thank you.
Right there. Excuse me. Would you like to look at the... Any questions at this point?
I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, I think I'll open the floor to the public, so if someone from the public has some comments to make.
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, if I may...
If you have a public comment.
If I may just ask, does the board want us to proceed with each of these items individually so that it can be commented, or do you want us... So we've talked about essentially the site plan review issues primarily. Do you want... And the lot line adjustment, do you want to have public comment about that, or do you want us to go through the CUP requirements first and the waivers, et cetera? We just want to handle it?
Why don't you go get through the entire plan, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we'll hold that.
The CUP requirements and the waiver requests need to be addressed.
Okay. Do you want to take the waiver request?
We don't usually do that, Lang. We usually let the public open up at this stage.
Your request, oh, okay.
The CUP is kind of getting down, and we let... We open it up again.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's up to you.
You know, I think that was not in the package that we got through the mail, but was... That's a lot of material at all at once.
In the previous...
Yeah, let's open it up to the public at this point, because we're getting a lot of information kind of all at once, and see if there's anybody had questions regarding what we've seen so far on the plan and had presented.
My name is Marty Kennedy. I live at Southern Wiley Creek Road. It's part of Ray Farms. I'm also on the Condominium Association Board.
Could you speak closer to the microphone, please, so that our viewers at home can hear what you're saying?
So we, the board, have been in communication with the applicant. The applicant had actually asked us to provide them a list of things that we want as part of, you know, the proposal. We provided that to him. We haven't had a response back yet, so I don't know where that's going to go, but I'm hoping that things are going to... We'll be able to work things out. But having said that, we do have some significant concerns. I was here and spoke on the 24th of April. I raised a couple of points. I'd like to expand on those a little bit tonight.
Marty? Excuse me. Are you speaking on behalf of the association right now, or yourself?
I would say that there's nothing formal. We haven't taken any votes, but certainly, what I'm saying, I think there's a general agreement of the board and so forth.
Thank you.
And by the way, there's a lot of residents here tonight. So I guess, first off, probably the most significant concern we have is, you know, the long-term picture of Ray Farmstead Road, what's going to happen. We have this, you know, I know the town, the applicant, Mr. Carlisle have all been in court the last few years on this dispute about the potential easement, and what we, the residents of Ray Farm, we don't want to get in, caught in the middle of this thing, wherever it goes. And so, having said that, I... It probably wouldn't surprise you to know that residents of Ray Farm would prefer the nice wooded area that's up in back of our homes that have, you know, the wetlands and walking paths and bike paths and so forth, that it be left alone. Having said that, we understand that people own their property, and they have enough... They certainly can develop their property. So the first thing I would say is that when the... The way this is proposed tonight is that there's a private driveway that's coming off Ray Farmstead Road and laid out inside the 50-foot easement right-of-way that's been in dispute. Obviously, that's a concern for us, because if you go ahead and approve it as a private driveway, and then at some point, I don't know whether it comes out of the courts or wherever, that Mr. Carlisle, who has the property to the back, gets the rights to use that easement, this is right... That driveway's right in that easement. We obviously don't want to have a private driveway that we would be maintaining, having somebody come in later and say, "Well, we can access that and have additional traffic from the development in the adjacent parcel coming through." So, again, we don't want to be in a position where, you know, you make an approval of this, and then we're back here, or we're hiring attorneys to come back and fight this sometime later on. So if, you know, and I know it's not you, but I'm saying if the town could provide assurances to us, the residents, that that connection would never happen, then we'd be fine with that private driveway. But other than that, this proposal is... We have a real problem with. I'd also like to say that, and I mentioned this at the last time I was here, you know, we have real concerns with the pedestrian safety issues out on Epping Road. On Epping Road carries about 12,000 vehicles per day. During the afternoon peak hour is about 1,500 vehicles. 1,500 vehicles in an hour. There are absolutely no gaps for a pedestrian to cross the street. You would not be able to cross that street safely. At the same time, if this fourth building gets approved, there'd be a total of 128 residential units at Ray Farm, and you have previously approved the gateway development, which is across the street. which is across the street, which has, I believe, 224 residential units. So that says that there'd be over 350 residential units within this one-block segment of Epping Road. And so with that demand of pedestrians, and then you combine that, by the way, with the walking paths and the hiking paths and the bike trails that draws people to this area, it's a real problem. What's needed is a mid-block pedestrian signal that would stop traffic and allow a pedestrian to cross Epping Road. And I know, you know, the applicant or others may say, well, Jesus, that's not my responsibility. I don't know, you know, maybe, but the bottom line is that at some point, somebody's going to get hit out there, somebody's going to get killed out there, and then everybody's going to say, okay, now we've got to do something. We really need to do this now. Also, and by the way, I think this issue may have been already addressed, but I just want to make sure you, the board, understand it in case it hasn't. Today, the town is widening that section of Epping Road, putting in a center, a left-turn lane, and also pushing out the shoulders and putting sidewalks in on either side. There is, the plans originally called for a sidewalk that extended from Ray Farmstead Road up through the gas station and towards the interchange. There was a small segment in front, just to the, let's see, to the north of Ray Farmstead Road that the property is owned by the applicant. And there was an issue of whether we were going to be able to get that right-of-way in front of that piece in order to construct the sidewalk. I don't know if that's been worked out, but if it hasn't been worked out, that's obviously a condition that you should make sure that the applicant provides that sufficient right-of-way because right now, there's a, there'd be a gap in that sidewalk and you'd have pedestrians walking out on Epping Road because of a particular, a short segment that you wouldn't be able to build a sidewalk.
Marty, can I ask you, you're talking about from the Ray Farm Road to the mobile station?
That's right, between the mobile station. And I guess, I'm not going to go through the entire list of the things that we provided on our list and gave to the applicant, but I just want to touch on a couple of things so you get a sense of the types of issues that we raised. First off, we would want to make sure that, you know, any type of clearing of this area minimizes the number of trees taken down. You know, we'd want to make sure that if, once, before trees are starting to take down, they're all flagged, they're, we, the residents, have an opportunity to go out there and see which trees are going to be taken down and if there's, and we'd be able to discuss that if it could be reduced. There's also that, this path that's shown, is proposed between Building C and Building D. And I know that there's, there was some discussion about trying to minimize the, you know, the impacts from the conservation commission, but we, the residents, would like to have that to be a five-foot-wide concrete, basically a sidewalk. And the reason for that is that we don't want some just wooded path. The, a number of the residents of Ray Farm are, you know, are older and they'd like to be able to go out, exercise, and walk around. And if that was in there, there would be a complete connected route, sidewalk route, that they'd be able to make an entire circular route. And so that's important to us. Also, we've, you know, we learned from, as these buildings are built, and I know you've probably have seen this before, anytime you have construction, you're going to have dirt and soot and stuff that's brought, that's developed from the trucks and so forth. The, what's, when Ray Farm is extended and construction trucks are traveling up Ray Farms Road into, to the site of Building D, there's going to be a lot of dust kicked up and Building A is going to get very dirty. We've seen this with the previous, when the previous buildings were constructed. What we'd want to see as a condition is that, whether it be at the end of the construction season or when needed, that the applicant would come out and power wash Building A when needed because if it's not, that's not done, we're going to have to do it and we're going to have to pay for it and we shouldn't have to be doing that. Also, just want to point out that I think Building A is, I think it's probably about six years old and Building B and Building C have been built more recently, but just in that short number of years, I mean, these buildings are fairly new. In this time, we've had issues with, you know, leaks in the roof, we've had issues with the elevators, we've had a number of issues that we, the residents, have had to pay for. And we want to make sure that in Building D, you know, we need to put in some type of a more strenuous construction inspection to make sure that these same issues don't show up in Building D. I guess, I'll leave it there for the number of issues that we've put in our, on our list, but I, a couple of last things I want to say is, one, we'd ask the planning board to schedule a sidewalk and for you to come out and take a look at the area. The residents would like you to come out and would like to be able to talk with you in kind of a more informal basis. And lastly, I attended the TRC meeting that was held back a while ago. This is when the, the plans that were submitted were incomplete and then they've resubmitted them since. The notes that came out of the TRC meeting, it was noted several times that the applicant would go back to the TRC with the resubmitted plans. I don't know if I missed that, but I don't think that's happened. And if it hasn't happened, I want to make sure that all these technical issues are reviewed and have enough time to be reviewed and this isn't rushed through. So I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Yes.
Marty, did you have a list of issues?
We, we-
You have a list of issues, you.
What, what?
Are you going by memory or do you have a list?
No, well, let's, let me explain what it is. We put a formal list, there's probably got 30 items.
Okay.
We've given it to the applicant. He said, he asked for it and we're hoping to work that out.
Can you provide that to the board?
I can, I can provide that if you can. I don't have it with me today, but I can get it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty. Yes, sir. Yes, step to the podium, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I've been here before. My name is Russ Hilliard. I'm with Upton and Hatfield and represent Scott Carlisle. And I only want to call to your attention one thing. You received a letter from Attorney Driscoll dated June 6th of this year regarding this application and a copy of that was sent to me, which I appreciate, but I wanted you to be clear that where it says at the bottom of the first page, the parties have moved forward to a resolution. Mr. Carlisle is not part of that resolution. That's a resolution between the town and the shaftmaster entities. I didn't want you to read that letter and assume that Mr. Carlisle was a party to any resolution. That's all I wanted you to know, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Driscoll of the Mitchell Municipal Group, represent the town's select board. As many of you know, there's been some dispute, it's been alluded to tonight, between the applicant and the town concerning the extension of Ray Farmstead Road, also known as the TIF Road, I think it was referred to as that by the engineers, as well as the applicant's proposal to build on the town's property at the end of-
Could you speak a lot louder, please?
Oh, sorry. However, as you can see from our letter that was just referenced by Attorney Hilliard, June 6th letter, the parties, and that would be, yes, the applicant and his entities, as well as the town, have worked diligently together towards a resolution of the disputes that are hanging out there, with the final piece of that resolution being an approval of the application that's before you. Per the application, the applicant is going to, and you heard this earlier, is going to extend the present Ray Farmstead Road as a public road built to town standards to the end of the property that the town owns in that area. Consequently, an approval for this plan removes our concerns that we raised with this board in our April 2nd letter that called for building of a private driveway on town property. Additionally, there's the question of the construction of the extension of Ray Farmstead Road pursuant to the TIF plan to the neighboring parcel of Mr. Carlisle. This is what was in court. The town felt that Mr. Carlisle had dedicated his easement across the applicant's land by virtue of putting that on his own subdivision plan that was approved by this board. The applicant had disputed that, so we brought the issue to the Rockingham Superior Court to get guidance on what rights the town actually has in terms of that dedication. The issue's been addressed by the court and the judge determined that the town has no ability to accept the extension of the road as dedicated because the dedication was ineffective as a matter of law. Mr. Carlisle lacks the legal capacity to dedicate the right-of-way to the town as he is an easement holder. So that issue has been resolved and our issue of the construction on the town-owned property has also been resolved by this, this agreement we have and the approval of the application that's before you for approval tonight. So the select board has, has been satisfied in terms of the agreement that they're attempting to effectuate. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask a question?
Please use the microphone and introduce yourself so we know who's talking to the board, please, and sing along. Thank you very much.
Patricia Evans, I'm a resident of Ray Farm. I just didn't really understand what the previous attorney said. So if, if I, the way that I heard it was that the town has accepted the applicant's plan to make a private driveway and that's acceptable to the town? Do I understand that correctly?
You should probably get up. Where is he?
Because if that's, if that's the case, then that is absolutely not what the, I'll speak for myself, that the resident of Ray Farm wants. Marty can readdress that. That we don't want to have a private driveway that will eventually, with the development of Mr. Carlisle's property, end up becoming our financial burden to maintain with additional traffic on that road. So what, what is the town actually accepting here, if I may?
Well, that's attorney to talk to that.
You should give, yeah. Please, can you address her?
Please do.
If you need a mic, that's all. Any mic is fine. You can stay up there, ma'am.
Yep.
Just to be clear, the judge has determined the town has no right in the extension of that easement beyond what the town owns under Ray Farmstead Road and a little, little bit beyond that. So what the town is receiving is the build-out of that, the rest of that road-to-town standards in that area. We don't have the ability to control the private driveway or anything along those lines. That's been determined by the court.
Okay, so then I just want to reiterate then the concern of Ray Farm residents, which Marty has already mentioned to you, is that we do not want that financial burden. If it's only being built as a private driveway with still the potential of Mr. Carlisle developing his property and using the easement, then we're going to be bearing a financial burden that we don't think is, is right or fair for us to take, take on. And that needs to be a consideration. As far as I'm concerned, whether you call it a town road, a private driveway, private-access road, or a cow path, we don't want the financial burden that comes with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You understand, you understood his answer?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got it.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Chris Hilson. I live at 10 Little Pine Lane. I'm also, incidentally, an attorney for the applicant here. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page here, we can all see from this plan that Ray Farmstead Road goes to its current terminus right about here, as everyone can see, right?
Yep.
The town owns a section of property up to approximately that line across the plan right there. Right now, that's not improved property. The, the arrangement that we've, we've gotten with the town, and to address some of the concerns of the condo members, is that the roadway from its current terminus to the end of the town property will be built to town specifications and the town will accept that increment of roadway as a public road right there. So the town will maintain that. The balance of this road is an easement. It's a private easement pertinent benefiting Mr. Carlisle's property. That's a matter of record. That's not something that we can do. That's, everyone's on notice of that because it's part of the town record. We're not going to improve that beyond the town, well, I'm sorry, beyond the driveway that goes up here. To the extent there's concern about the expense associated with that driveway to the right or to the south into the newly relocated Building D, the only thing that I'd say is, number one, a portion of that is going to be maintained by the town, another from the terminus to here. The other thing that you need to recognize is this project was approved with a fourth building down here to the west along Route 27.
Yep.
That building's approved and that entailed a private driveway off of, I think it's Wiley Creek Road down here. So the condominium association would have been responsible for the maintenance of that road all the way down to service this new building. As I understand it, this driveway is going to be significantly shorter, so there's actually less of a burden on the condominium association in terms of maintenance. There's nothing that we can do if Mr. Carlisle wants to improve that right-of-way up to his, up to his property. There would have to be a mutual maintenance agreement associated with that. That particular quantum of the access at law, they're going to have to share in part of the maintenance costs associated with that. But as I conceive of this plan, the portion of the driveway that the condominium association would be responsible to address is actually much shorter than what it would be had Building D been positioned in its original location. That's thing one. While I'm up here and before I, I sit down, I understand Mr. Kennedy's concern about access across 27. There's nothing that the applicant can do about the quantum of traffic on that road. I mean, I've driven it, we've all driven it, people drive fast on it. That's, that cannot be addressed through this site plan application. I guess that's all I would say. To the extent there's a concern that there'd be additional loading on that road as a result of this application, again, remember, this project has already been approved with a fourth building here. So we're just moving the building. There's a few extra units to it, but not to such a degree that it's going to provide a significant additional loading, you know, either to Route 27 or out what was originally contemplated as Ray Farmstead Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to respond to that.
Yes.
I think Attorney Hilson brings up a good point that I actually was queuing in on. I don't know if the applicant's engineer can give us a delta on the road, the net road, that would be affiliated cost for the association?
We don't have those numbers, no. It is shorter what we're doing, but we can get that.
Mr. Brown, if I may, just to clarify, when you say road, are you talking about the driveway?
I'm not talking about the one that's built.
Well, I know. Are you, are you talking about the extra 70 or 100 feet or are you talking about-
Yeah, I'm talking about the responsibility of the association, not the town.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify, I'll tell you my lawyer's perspective.
Sure.
The applicant is going to pay at its expense to build to town road specifications to the end of the area deeded to the town as part of the TIF road to begin with.
Yeah, it's 70 feet.
From there, it's private. That's why I decided, I call it a driveway as opposed to the-
Sure.
That's all I was trying to clarify.
Okay.
So from there, that will be private and Attorney Hilson addressed that in its comparison to what was already approved previously with Building D down in that lower-left corner. I don't know the distance, I don't know the difference, but I would also have everybody keep in mind that it's not simply an expense. There's going to be 32 residents there who are paying their condominium fees like everybody else does for the care and maintenance of the property as it's, you know, owned by the, the common areas of the property. Go ahead.
So-
Yes, sir.
Eric Bartman with Millennium Engineering. From what I heard-
From what I heard Attorney Hilson say, though, I think which addresses this woman's question is that if Carlisle ever develops his property, the expense is not going to be solely on the condo association for maintaining that driveway. He's going, they're going to have to come to a mutual maintenance agreement so that the expense, the expense of the condo association won't be any higher than it is now to maintain that roadway, or that driveway. Is that correct?
I think that's the law. I, in other words, there has to be, there has to be a meeting of minds, or, I mean, there's, there has to be a mutual easement arrangement, maintenance arrangement. You can, the, the fee owner can use that fee, and the easement owner can also use that fee within the scope of the easement, whatever it is. But to the extent they're both using it, the principles of equity require that the parties come to some sort of meeting of minds about sharing that. But Mr. Bottman is, or Mr. Phoenix, I guess, very correct. There's going to be 32 additional residents here, and it's going to be less than going off of this spur down here and putting a road all the way on the back of what was Building D here.
I think that addresses that part of the concern legitimately. I think the question of potential future development behind this property is certainly speculative, but also it's hard for us to regulate that at this point because it's another property owner, it's another application, it's potentially in the future, it's not in front of us, so. And there is no agreement in place now. So Mr., to my knowledge, Mr. Carlisle has not reached an agreement with the applicant about that. So that's, that's definitely up there. We understand the concern, for sure.
Yep.
Let's get more people.
Yes, sir. And then I'll get you.
Richard Ploss, 7 Willie Creek. I think that, that what you were referring to, the maintenance cost of one section versus another, is irrelevant because we fully understand that if we have a private road that goes to one of our buildings, whether it's in the lower part of the property or the upper, we're paying for the maintenance on that. We understand that. There's no way that any other traffic could be using the other road. That's the part that we're concerned about. So if the, the matter at hand doesn't get resolved such that Mr. Carlisle finds another way into his property, but instead has to come across our driveway to get there, our road, then that's where the issue comes in, okay? So the comparison, I think, was irrelevant. The other part of this is that, that you're building a 24-foot wide road and putting 28-foot worth of traffic on it if that road gets used that way, okay? That doesn't make sense to me. Because aside from the width, I believe, and I could be wrong about this, but there's a different way to manufacture a road, to build a road, that's going to have heavier traffic. And that would not be taken into account. So the maintenance on this piece of road that was designed just for driveway traffic would then be considerably higher because it wasn't built to the specs necessary for a much more commonly-used 28-foot road. So those are the issues I'm concerned about. If this matter is not resolved such that Mr. Carlisle still has the opportunity to use the road that we've put in with our own money, essentially, then it doesn't work for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a minute, this lady's next, and then I'll have you, sir.
Eileen Tricky, 24 Willie Creek Road. I agree with a number of the things said by the last people. Attorney Hill is mentioning that this original building and the now looked-at Building D being moved, it's not the same. Yes, we would have maintained this piece of road, but it didn't have an easement under it. This one does. We don't understand what that easement will be in the future and what, I mean, what could be happening with that easement. And that is what could increase the cost of our maintaining that road. So until this is determined in final legally, and then Mr. Hill, Attorney Hill, mentioned that we would have to negotiate with Carlisle to come up with an equitable, so that means we have to hire attorneys to come up with something equitable? We, we feel as members, and I'm saying as owners and residents, and I'm saying this because we had a meeting, and the majority of the residents are really concerned about this, and the cost that could be just handed to us because things are not resolved, and we might need lawyers, we might need to maintain roads more, and why should we be inheriting that when we all bought our property thinking that the building was going over here? One last question.
Yes.
Is this the last time that we will have to talk about this before you say it's approved?
I can't tell you. We don't know what the decision of the board will be this evening.
The board being you.
If the case is continued, then yes, you will. If the case is not continued?
Right.
Or, so I can't give it? Yep.
Okay, well, then we all should say our piece tonight, I guess.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, just so quickly, just from here.
Please step to the microphone so our viewers at home who want to throw popcorn at you can do it.
Just quickly, I'm John Palmer, and I live in number 7 Willie. And just so you know, what we've been told about this Carlisle property, and we're talking about a little teeny road, a little teeny driveway, a little teeny this, a little teeny that, maybe in the land, maybe a little cottage back there, so, no. That's not what we're told. We're told that maybe there'll be a big brewery. We're told that the town wants ho, at least one state-of-the-art hotel like the Sheraton. So we're not, we're not talking about, from what we hear, and we're told nothing, because, like I say, it's, it's not happened yet. But if we're making plans now, and Carlisle's got plans, big plans, all of a sudden, this little driveway just, we're, we're going to be responsible to have that little driveway be able to carry all kinds of constant equipment all day long and night. So I think it's a little more than just, that's all.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Again? Sure. Why not?
Just, sorry. One other thing that, again, I'm not speaking for the community, and yet I was at a meeting, and the majority agree. They are very concerned about this. It kind of comes down to, because we don't know the details of this easement and whether only cows can come across our property or something much bigger, unless the town and the planning board cannot guarantee that Carlisle will never be granted access through our property, we'd rather have it be a public road. And, pardon me.
I can address that, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
The town tried to do that. The town tried to make that a public road. And was not, one, we were unsuccessful.
Right.
So we can't, how can we guarantee what we already lost trying to do?
Quite frankly, I know you can't guarantee that. So I also don't know, so if, if you also, and the board therefore can't require the developer to, to make it a public road, I assume you can't do that either. So assuming you can't do that, I would hope that, at least for the safety of the residents in the community, to have us avoid property damage in our community, and to avoid damage to the bridge that is going over wetlands here, that the planning board, board at minimum, require the private road to have restrictions such as it only for local resident and local deliveries, and perhaps with a tonnage limit.
Okay, thank you. Marty?
Again, Marty Kennedy, 7 Wiley Creek Road. I just want to make one point relative to the, you know, the question of, I know you don't have the power to make this a public road, but, you know, you do have the power to deny this project. I mean, what's being proposed here is a private road that's creating a real problem here. We'd like to work with the applicant, and he can make it a public road. He could a lot make that happen. And so we'd like to work out with him for him to come back with a revised plan that shows a public road. If, I mean, the bottom line is, if there's any potential for a connection to the Carlisle property, we don't want a private driveway. And, you know, I would hope that the planning board would not approve a plan that has a private driveway when you know there's a possibility that future traffic will be using it, or that we will have to be hiring attorneys to be fighting this in court, which we want to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi. My name is Herbert Shalick. I'm also a resident of the community and a member of the board of the association. I just want to bring up, from what I understand, the parking for the new building will be divided into a higher part and a lower part, and there'll be stairs going up from the lower to the higher. We, as a community, have virtually everybody in their 70s or 80s, and that is not, in my view, a good, a good way to have parking tiered like that. Also, the handicap is show, is being shown below also, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense for handicap people to have to then go up a grade.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I don't know how the board would like to proceed. Would you like us to address some of these comments now?
Mm-hmm.
Or, and then we can go into the?
Yep, let's do that.
All right, again, Tim Phoenix, counsel. My cohorts here, the technical may correct me on some of this, but I'll give you my perspective of some of the things that have been, been raised. I'm going to kind of go in, in reverse order here. With respect to Mr. Shalick's comments, we certainly understand, I, I live in a community, and I'm in that age group myself, so I understand the nature of the concern. However, the primary parking for this building will be underneath the building. It'll be, what, 36 spaces? 36 spaces underneath the building for 32 units. And Kat mentioned the new state law that limits apartments to one and a half spaces per unit, which may allow this external parking to be reduced in scope, and thereby being less of an impact in general, but potentially to the buffers and what have you. We'll see where that goes because there's some consideration as to whether that's going to be one space per unit, et cetera. But in general, this, right now, this is private property. It's owned by Mr. Shaftmaster's company, and he has, with due respect, the right to develop it. The Carlisle easement has existed for, I think, 100 and some odd years. It was litigated 25 or 30 years ago to establish its specific location now, and Mr. Carlisle, as a private property owner with that easement, has the right to access his property over it, to what extent remains to be seen. But both Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Shaftmaster, whose company owns it, have the right to create a driveway from the end of what is the extended TIF road, which is going to be a public road, but built by Mr. Shaftmaster, and utilize that for permitted purposes. And that private issue between he and Mr. Carlisle, or between he and the, and the present condominium unit owners, is just that, a private issue, and is, is really not before this board. I understand the, the concept and the concerns fully, but you, this board is looking at its ordinances and regulations, not the, the private, the private issues.
Yep.
With respect to, and that also addresses respectfully Mr. Kennedy, Marty's comments about the same thing, essentially with the private drive. I'm told that the road, the street, if you will, the extended, is going to be at 28 feet. The driveway that will be accessed, if you will, primarily by the residents of Unit D is going to be 24 feet? It's my understanding that perhaps the driveways, which are similar in nature and access buildings A, B, and C, I believe are only, are 22 feet. So the, I, I just want to be clear because people may be a little bit confused as to where a roadway stops and how that's going to be built, and where a driveway starts, and how that's going to be, going to be built as well. So the, I'm going back sort of to the beginning. The first thing, note I had after comments was, you know, what's the long-term issue with Ray Farm Road? And I think Attorney Driscoll and Attorney Hilson cleared, cleared that up quite nicely in terms of what's going to be town road, what's going to be private road. So I, I won't go into that. With respect to pedestrian safety on, on Epping Road, I understand the, the issue. The four buildings were approved by this board previously. Three of them have been built. The four were approved and the three built without any offside improvements on Epping Road. While I understand the concern about it, the, the issue of the applicant paying for a crosswalk, et cetera, is not on the table. The, the issue of the private ownership of a section of where the town wants to put sidewalk is not before this board now. Mr. Shaftmaster's willing to consider it once we get through this, this section and he gets approval. And, you know, I would mention, Mr. Driscoll was here, Mr. Hilson and Mr. Ford are here regarding the relationship of Mr. Shaftmaster's companies and the town on pending litigation, which, you know, the, the agreement between them is to, this would be settled, but we have to get, for that to be effectuated, we have to get through this. So I just don't want to, I don't want to lead anybody, given our hope that, and intention that as of tonight, this board will see fit to grant a conditional approval with technical matters to be resolved with the town's expert Underwood Engineers, and legal issues to be resolved. For instance, there are pending condominium documents. They are essentially the same as were prepared for A, B, and C, which are now in effect and were, if I, I wasn't involved, but were presumably approved by the city, I mean, by the town at the time. Those, those buildings were approved. That would be by, approved by Town Council. There was a question about minimal tree removal. That would all be based upon the construction management plan, as would things like hours of operation, you know, dust, cleaning other, other buildings, and those kind of things are all conditions that would be worked out between the town and its builders and what have you as a construction management plan. That includes tree removals, dust affecting Building A, et cetera. I don't know, because I wasn't here at the time, whether Building A was affected negatively when Building B and C were approved because you have to go by A to get to B and by both to get to C. I just don't know the answer to that. There was a, a request for consideration of a hard sidewalk. Kat may be able to embellish, but my understanding is that the Conservation Commission was, was looking for a path, not a poured concrete sidewalk. With respect to concerns about relatively new buildings that have had issues, roofs, whatever they may be, again, understand the issue, but those are private issues between either the condominium association itself or the condominium association and the building or the Condominium Association and the builders, et cetera. But they are not issues, at least in my mind, before this Board. This building, once approved, will have to be built to town specifications and compliant with all building codes, which will be investigated and reviewed on an ongoing basis by the Building Inspection Department going forward. The, there was a TRC meeting, and Millennium has responded to the TRC comments. We did just receive Underwood comments recently, within the last five or 10 days. Those have not yet been responded to. Our proposal is that those would be part of the conditions of approval to resolve those outstanding issues with them. I'll just repeat, because I think it bears, it bears repeating. I certainly also understand as a, as both a taxpayer and a homeowner and an association where we pay for maintenance of common areas and what have you, I understand the comments. But I, again, want to stress that, that this application and this construction is not simply an expense. It's going to be offset by significant payments into the coffers of the Condominium Association by virtue of the residents who live there. And to reiterate that, again, understanding the concern of the commenters who live in A, B, or C today about the driveway over the easement area in favor of Mr. Carlyle, again, I understand the questions and the concerns about it, but I must reiterate that those are also private issues between the Condominium Association and the developer and/or Mr. Carlyle in the future, not, what's before you is, you know, is it safe, is it the right width, those kinds of things. I think that's all I have for now. If you, we certainly would be open at, well, at any time, but if you have questions you want us to address in addition now, we're happy to. Otherwise, I would turn it back over to Millennium to address the conditional use permit requirements and the waiver requests.
Okay. Questions from the Board?
I'm just curious, were the engineers able to figure the difference in the roadway, the private roadway, between the current location of D and the proposed location of D?
So I was able to pull the record site and grading plan from the 2018 supplemental. And that roadway is about 500 feet. And then roughly to the first access, we are also about 500 feet for the new Building D relocation. So there is some difference with the tail as far as coming up and around and making that closure.
So it wouldn't be considered a significant reduction?
I don't think I would call it that. I would say it's comparable in distance.
Thank you.
And I'd like to address one thing that Attorney Phoenix said. The Concom is okay with a hardened surface for the walk, the connection, but they want it as minimal as possible. So we're charged with investigating that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Trying to limit, balancing the impact of people versus animals and nature.
And we also have to look at ADA requirements,
Yeah, right.
which are much more stringent for a paved surface than a trail.
Right. That makes sense. Thank you. Do you want to go to the cop or not at this point?
Can we maybe address some of our second questions first?
Yeah, yes.
Do you want to go first?
No, you go first.
Okay. I think in terms of the, some of the questions about pedestrian accessibility, I understand, you know, Epping Road improvements are tricky, but is there, I think, a pedestrian kind of like plan, a circulation route that you guys have drawn up to sort of show how pedestrians can get to the trail network? Or, you know, if you live here, do you have to, like, get in a car to go for a walk? Or like, can you, can, this is like, there's so much open space.
So we have not mapped all of the trail systems out there. They are, you know, ever-changing depending on the season and how people access and that type of thing. One of the things that we have discussed in-house over the last few days is adding some of those significant trails to show where they are if someone were looking or trying to find them for the first time, and give an idea of where those access points are, or maybe come once the development, you know, the new access road is put in. So that there is still some of that feature that's there to maintain that.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be great to have, like, trail markers and maybe some, a little bit of wayfinding, just understanding, like, if I lived here, I would really love the opportunity to have places to walk. And it'll also reduce some of the vehicular traffic on Epping Road and whatnot if people don't feel like they need to get in their car and go to one of the other trailheads in town just to access the network. So, I mean, I would recommend that as a condition of approval to present a pedestrian circulation plan on the property, that's sort of holistic, including trail markers.
Yeah, can I, can I comment on that? Right now, it's very difficult to get to those trails, because there's really not a formal crossing. Like Kat had said earlier, the mountain bikers have a little 2-foot-wide bridge and there's some other things. But so, in this, with this proposal, it'll be a lot more accessible to all the residents.
Okay.
I think I was looking at the planting plan that was presented, as well as the marking of the existing trees on the site. So there's, you know, a couple dozen, probably, very mature trees that will be removed or disturbed as part of this project. But the planting plan itself is only really proposing one significant canopy tree, which is the Nissa Silvatica. I think that I would personally like to see more canopy trees and evergreen trees being proposed to sort of replace, not that you could ever replace what's there, but to provide some more shading, especially in the parking lot. Currently, there's no canopy trees being proposed in the parking lot, which is, you know, there's landscaping, but that doesn't do anything for heat island effect. So I would also recommend that as a condition of approval, that, you know, maybe like 10 additional canopy trees get planted as part of this project.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that with the TRC.
I think one of the things we have talked about too is potentially replanting on the edges of the access drive as well and showing plantings there. They're just not included at this side.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily recommend planting in the wetland areas. Because I think we want to leave that as undisturbed as possible. But, you know, especially in areas where you have pavement kind of closer to the building. I think you can definitely do some more shading. I'm curious about the, just how the town is gonna, this public road that kind of turns into a private road, but there's no turnaround. How does that work for plowing?
So right now, there are, Tim, the right phrase is license use agreements, right?
Yes.
There's license use agreements in place with the town and Ray Farm, I believe, to allow the trucks to turn around. And what they do right now, and what we are unsure of how they will continue, but what they do right now is the end of that paved section is right, existing is right there. And so they have a license agreement to be able to turn around in the entrance to Wiley Creek and come back out. So whether that license remains in place, which I think that is probably the more favorable one to stay, or another one is drafted, we would anticipate it would be something to that effect.
Keep going? I, I'm good for now.
Go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't see the plotting of the existing trees. What, what?
Oh, it was on the grading plan.
It was on the grading plan? Okay. Which is...
We've got there...
Yeah. Can you?
No, I lost it. What, do you know what page it's on?
I believe it's Sheet 9. I can't read that page number from here, but I believe it's Sheet 9. They're shown on the existing conditions plan, and then they're reshown on, it is Sheet 9. It's labeled as building site plan. And this is without showing the removals of what will be taken out during the development, or what, what will stay. So like, I would anticipate anything...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Obviously, this is the tree line that we've indicated, so anything within that tree line will probably stay. The ones in, in this area will likely be removed. We may be able to save one or two of these larger ones in this island as well and hold on to those during construction and afterward.
So the trees that are 20 inches at breast height or larger are on here?
Correct.
Okay. I have to look with magnifying glasses, because I can't, I don't see them, but...
They're little black dots.
They're little black dots.
You can see them on this tree.
Okay. All right, if they're there, I, I trust you.
Looks like somebody shot it with a BB gun.
Yeah, it kind of does.
All right. And the limit of clearing, is that on one of these as well? Is that, did you just?
So the buildings, this, this grading plan that we're looking at, Sheet 9 does show it, so you can see the tree line kind of pecked in.
That's, that's the limit of clearing.
Yep.
No photometric plan yet?
No, there is no lighting plan yet. We're in the process of getting one updated to show the lighting that's going to be required along the access road as well as along the building. So there, driveway, driveway. There was previously one that was indicated, and we're just waiting for that to get updated.
All right, we've got, we've got wetland issues, and that's a big concern for me. I'm not entirely comfortable not approving something when I don't see for sure that there aren't, there isn't lighting going on to wetlands, or you're doing your best to prevent that from happening. So that's a, that is a concern that I have. On your landscape plan, just, it's, it's a, it's a drawing issue, I believe. But if you go to the landscape plan and compare it to the site overview plan...
Excuse me, can you just step over for us?
Actually, if you go to, yeah, the landscape plan, in the lower parking area, you've got two wa, two wide strips there that I presume are drive, drive areas. But they're not, it's not shown, that isn't, doesn't correspond to the site overview plan, which basically has the parking area, what I think is a sidewalk, and then a drive, drive area. And it's hard to describe it without being able to point to it, but...
So are you talking about this middle line?
I'm talking about that, and then above, so go back to the, to the upper right. Go to the, yeah, down a little bit. Go to the, right, right there.
Okay.
Or closer to you, yeah, that, and then the one next to it.
This one.
They're two together that are about the same width. And they're not on your site overview plan. There's just one wide driveway.
The intention is that this, this little narrow one where this canopy sticks over, that's the sidewalk. And then this is all, this is a center line of pavement, is what that's showing.
Well, that's a center line.
So there's your, there's your first kind of accessway up and the first 24-foot section here. And then that continues, you know, you have pavement still down here, and this is landscape in the middle, and then we have pavement again on the edge.
All right, it's, that the center line isn't shown on the site over, the overview plan, so it's kind of confusing. All right. The driveway, again, on that, well, can you, no, that's okay. Can you go to the site overview plan, that's Sheet 6? So the driveway, where driveway is written next to the parking, the lower parking area, it's on the entrance road. It's written, right in the middle of the road, it says driveway?
Yep, right there.
All right, and then, to the right of that, is a planted area?
Yes, that oval is planted, or green space.
Is it, I guess I need to have that explained, because it appears that it kind of sticks out into the road. Is that, am I, am I looking at that improperly?
So the, the dash dot line that runs through the center of that island is the edge of the easement for the Carlyle property.
Okay.
And so it, there's between, you have kind of two lines in succession here, you have a dash line and then a solid line next to it, and then the driveway symbol or writing, and then another solid line. That, between those two solid lines is your 24-foot access road that then continues up and over. And then you also have 24 feet here, coming up into the top of the building.
Yeah, there's a nose there for that island that you either can go to the right or to the left.
Okay.
And there'll be signs there to alert people of that.
Of the entrance.
And that's planted?
Yes.
That's a planted area?
Well, on the landscape plan, it shows several...
Yeah.
Plankings, but they're not shown specifically where they're located.
Right.
As I see.
Which would be nice to have, too. Kind of jumping around a little. Before I forget, I, we're always concerned about native plantings, so that is something where we would stress for your landscape person. And where is the snow storage on, do you, what plan is that on? That's kind of a nice thing to have on your landscape plan, just so we can see what's, where snow is going in relation to plants that you've put in.
Inside walks and other things that are, yeah, yep, yep.
Yeah, we, we run into that oftentimes where...
What we probably need to do is ask, store snow.
Right.
Probably need to ask, put this on condition, see a finished plan. These are the first notes, really, yeah.
I know this isn't really, I know this is, this is a question that I'm just curious about. It's not something really for our approval, but had the traffic study been done? I don't remember the timing for the Ray Farm. Was the, when, when was your traffic study done for your initial project as compared to the Ray Farm? Was the Ray Farm subsequent, or was the Gateway Project subsequent to your project?
I know that they were in the planning board process at the same time, but I couldn't speak to the, when the dates of the actual studies were done off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Certainly, for the advent of the Gateway Project, certainly impacts...
Minor impact, yes, sir.
Yeah. Just, just for clarification, again, on your site overview plan, you've got your 100-foot buffer and your 150-foot buffer lines. Can you label those? They're, they're the same, if you looked at a legend, they would, they're the same line. They're the dark dotted, dash dark dotted line.
I believe the...
They should be different, because they are indicating different...
So this, this...
Yeah, they have them with different colors, but they show up as the same line.
No, the site, the site overview plan only shows the wetland buffers. It doesn't actually show the shoreline buffers.
Okay. Oh, that's right. But just...
And we, I can add more annotations to those as well.
Yeah. And I guess generally, I know that the Conservation Commission kind of gave you their blessing. I mean, I look at your square footage that is impacted. Shoreland buffer has almost 20,000 square feet of impact. It's a lot. That's all I'll say.
She's running out of steam, you got any more to...
Well, I think that's a good segue, because I've been looking at this Conservation Commission memorandum that we received.
Yep.
Which I think I'd like to, I think the blessing was given with quite a few conditions that maybe we should discuss, whether we agree with. The reduced impacts associated with the pedestrian trail, I think that was mentioned, I think that's a great idea, to retain natural limited use buffers to the greatest extent possible. So, yes, improve the trail, but minimize impact.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
To protect from further development the originally proposed building delocation in perpetuity within the condominium documentation.
Didn't catch that, that's good. Yeah.
I agree with what he held in doubt, though.
I agree with that. And that is your wetland.
Those are for the wetland. I know, we haven't really gotten to that yet. With regard to the shoreline, the reduced parking, I really like that, you know, if we don't need to build the parking, that's not...
Is there any way we can get a copy of that memo?
Oh.
I have my notes, but I never got...
Okay, yeah, I think it's just dated today.
Kristen's official one.
Yeah, well, we have plenty of them.
I think that the seed mix be specified in the landscape plan, that makes a lot of sense. I would also add that native plant...
Got to have a finalized landscape plan.
Yeah.
This is the first sketch.
I'll go with that. Temporary impacts within shoreline buffer, 85% revegetation upon completion of the project.
Yep.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And to minimize salting on the access road specifically at the wetland crossing, I'm wondering if we can request that they add signage there, because...
Good luck. I'm saying good luck with them doing it.
Well, if it's a...
You can put a sign up, no, I'm saying in the real world.
Right, but if you have a sign up, and then the residents see their plow operator that they're paying to salt, to plow, put salt down, then I think they'll say something, and they'll get a new company, so...
I think Marty over there says he doesn't like signs that are ignored, but that's okay. I heard that somewhere before. I agree, I understand the intent. I think the intent is a good intent.
It's educated, it's not like a no left turn sign that I agree with.
I'm skeptical in the application.
Is that, is there more? No. Oh, no.
No. Any questions, gentlemen?
Okay.
Well, do we go to... Waiver request?
It's up to you. You're the captain of this ship.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shaftmaster just reminded me, again, I wasn't involved before, but if I understood incorrectly, the wetland and buffer impact for this is less than it was to access Building D in its previous location. That's if I understood what he just told me correctly.
Smaller puddles, huh?
I can't remember if the previous one was connected to, was over, it was looking over a pond, from what I remember.
Yes, man-made pond.
A little different, in that it's a...
So, the previous building, the building delocation that was, this is included in the CUP filings, as far as where to look in the packet, but the original building delocation had more impacts to the 40 and 50 and the 75-foot wetland buffers versus what we are proposing in the new reconfiguration. The difference, however, primarily being that Wattenbrook is identified on the USGS surveys upstream, or in line with the location of Building D, and therefore, the shoreline kicks into it. And one of the biggest things that, you know, in our conversations with Conservation Commission, one of the big things that we talked about is the majority of the shoreline buffer impact that's shown on the plans that you have in front of you, which is, I only did this for the 100 to the 150 foot, but that's indicated as 2,343 square feet of total impact. Of that, 14,750 is temporary. And the goal of talking about these parking lot reconfigurations and kind of making some of these changes is to increase that temporary number, and again, to get the revegetation back and the native species back in, and give that water quality improvement back to the shoreline area. Unfortunately for us, the shoreline areas typically tend to be at the downslope, and so our stormwater treatment elements end up in that particular portion. So that's why we're seeing that kind of large shoreline impact. But the goal, you know, as we've stated, is with this parking lot redesign and some of these changes, to pull some of that impact away and reduce it, and then bring in these native species, so that we are kind of protecting what we're bringing back and making it a better end product.
Was there any talk at the Conservation Commission about avoiding, and this is hard to do, but avoiding plowing into that, snow plowing into that area?
We didn't talk about snow removal at all.
No. Can you, can you kind of look at that and see if there's a way you can minimize snow going into the protected area, the shoreline protection area?
Yeah. Most definitely, that's something that we can consider in the snow removal areas, or the storage locations, rather.
And we are okay with all the conditions as the Conservation Commission... There is nobody in Congress on here today, right? Yes. How long are you going to go on this one, till it's 10?
Yeah.
Should we let the other applicant go?
Good, yeah.
Well, I mean, if you're not, you gotta go to midnight, then you gotta go to 10.
Nope, 10.
Probably 10:30. Suggest we do.
Okay, let me just...
What, do you need the agenda?
Trying to find the case here, yeah. Just looking ahead and looking at the clock. I would say we're going to be busy here till 10 or after. So if you could reschedule for, could we table your case and reschedule it for, when's our next date, two weeks?
Two weeks. I don't know what the agenda is on that, but this would normally get bumped in the front of the line. Is it 26th?
Date is still on.
Dave, you there?
I am. I don't know what the agenda is, but they'd be first.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah. I would like to vote to put them on the next agenda. We haven't opened the case, so...
Yeah.
But, do they have to get, do they have to re-notify if we do that, David, at this stage?
No, just continue the application to a date, time, and place certain.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're good.
Table, yeah, okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion for you.
Okay.
Does that work, you guys? We can keep you here till midnight and not be heard, but just trying to get you out of here. 26th of June. Just two weeks.
Two weeks.
You can do that? Okay. I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion to continue Planning Board Case Number 25-4 to June 26th at 7:00 PM at the NOAC Room of the Town Office Building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dean seconded, thank you. Voice forward is fine on that. Those in favor, please, can I say aye?
Aye.
Nay? Abstentions? So be it, thank you, gentlemen. Sorry that we are taking so long, but...
See, order had only been different. See you in a couple weeks. Yeah, take care.
Okay, now where are we here? Are we ready to start looking at... All right. Let's start looking at the waiver requests. There are several waivers you're asking for.
Mr. Chair, we are asking for three waivers within this project. The first two were requested during the previous Building A, B, and C's project process, and so we've included that waiver request again on the precedence that this is just simply a relocation of Building D, and the same ideology of why the waivers were granted the first time continues on for this time. In brief, those two waivers are 100% waiver requests for the town's public school facility impact fee, and a 75% waiver request for the town's public recreation facility impact fee. The intent being to transfer the same requests which were granted previously by the board on July 25th, 2019, and June 14th, 2018, respectively. At that time, DTC lawyers provided Attachment A to my waiver request letter, that was dated June 7th, 2018, and we believe that this attachment applies to the relocation of Building D. It is, in fact, just a relocation of Building D, the physical movement of the building from one area of the site to a second new area, which will better suit the development, in our opinion. The new condominium documents will be, that will be executed, will restrict the ownership of all new units to be 55-plus, as already currently exists for the existing condominium for A, B, and C. The proposed Building D relocation will allow unit owners also to access the recreational facility clubhouse that exists off Wiley Creek Road. Wiley Creek's waiver request from 100% of the town's school impact fee, sorry, 75% of the town's recreational impact fee should be granted, because the active adult community will not contribute students to the school system, which will not necessitate capital improvements in school facilities, and will not contribute a burden to the town's recreational facilities in light of the onsite recreation improvements that have already been constructed for the initial development, and because no youth will be added as participants in the town's recreational programs, and because of the principles of fundamental fairness and equal treatment of similar projects, as well as the doctrine of administrative gloss. And for those reasons, those are our first two waiver requests. The third waiver request that comes with this application is also a continuation from the previous application, and that is for a waiver from Section 11.34 of the Site Plan and Subdivision Regulations, which provides less than the required recreational area per dwelling, because while there is significant open space on this lot, it is slightly undersized for the total amount of lots that are present.
So, let's talk about the first one, the school impact fee waiver motion. Not the motion, but that's what we're coming, a motion. Do we get the detailed answers on the questions on that one, or...
Are you asking if we read every one of the tail?
I think so.
Five-tail test, I mean, we've had, we've been back and forth on that, I think, where we've had some applicants go through each one, it gets a bit redundant.
Yep.
We haven't done it all the time.
Well, I think we've also already sort of debated this one for this project.
We have.
Previous, I mean, not the same word, but I do recall that when that was approved previously, it was with the condition in the HOA documents regarding the age of people living in the units. Is that something we would want to condition again? I don't know what the language of that specific condition was, but I feel like we should just be consistent.
Isn't there something in the...
It's in the deed, I think.
In the deed?
Already in the units out there, but we probably should still have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I did include the original notices of decision on the waiver request in the waiver letter, if you have that.
That's what I just...
And that's what Tim, I believe that's what Tim just handed to John.
So, yeah, so it says, I don't know if I need to read this whole thing, it's a letter saying that the planning board voted to approve the request for the waiver, this is for the public school fee. I'm trying to find the pertinent language. So, the approval is subject to the condition that the age-restricted units be bound by appropriate deeded age restrictions on occupancy as required by the Exeter Zoning Ordinance, Article 11.7.1, firm and forms and wording to be approved by the town's legal counsel. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the building inspector slash code enforcement officer shall verify that a deed conveying ownership of the age-restricted unit has been recorded at the registry of D's with the necessary age restrictions. Signed, Chair Plummer.
Okay, well, what am I going to do? I remember writing that.
You remember?
All right, I think that we got through that. Is there a motion then, to, for the school impact fee waiver?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of Willie Creek Company, Planning Board Case Number 22-3, for a waiver from Section 11.7.1 of the zoning ordinance regarding payment of impact fees be approved with the condition, with the same condition that it was approved with, on July 25th, 2019. Can I say that?
Okay. Second?
I second.
Dean seconded, thank you. Let's see.
Roll call?
Roll call, yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye, Sam, thank you. unanimous vote, thank you. Recreation impact fee. Is there a letter signed on that one?
Yeah, but this one says it's also for, I'm confused, public school facility impact fee.
It's the second paragraph of that one, Jen.
Oh, but it's a waiver request for 75% waiver from the requirement for payment of the town's public reach, okay.
Yeah, that's what we did, we didn't give them 100%.
No.
Yeah, it was 75%.
Do you want to read it?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
It's getting late.
It just said, "The Exeter Planning Board voted to approve your request for a 75% waiver from the requirement for payment to the town's public recreation facility impact fee in accordance with Article 11.7 of the Exeter Zoning Ordinance." There's no other explanation or conditions. I would like to add the condition for that a pedestrian circulation plan be provided to planning staff, including trail markers.
Do you want to do that on the next one? Because that one's more... Because that one's more the recreational area motion?
Mm-hmm.
Waiver?
Oh.
You know what I mean? This one's more about a fee.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Good to have it, good to have it, though.
Yeah, I figured it would go in one of these.
Okay. I have a question on this for the applicant. In a letter dating June 7th of 2018, and this was connected with a recreation impact fee, but it said all of this, they talked about the building of the recreational building, which would offset, would be in connection with a fee that they're hoping to have waived, but they said all of this is in addition to the miles of walking and biking trails, which Willie Creek has for the last decades, has for the last decades, and will continue to make available to the public for its use. So, my question is, are those trails, are those part of the condition, are those part of the calculation for your reduction of the impact fee? And if they are, I am a little bit concerned. I know we've approved this in the past, but if that land gets developed, how do we address that? If sometime down the road, you develop that other piece of property that you have?
I'll take a stand.
Does that make sense?
Well, the question makes sense. I don't know if we have an answer that makes sense.
Okay, I'll give it a shot, because I'm a little concerned about that.
From my point of view as counsel, I was not involved back then, but what we are asking is for the exact approval that was granted previously. There wasn't, the only condition I'm aware of, in fact, I don't even think there was a condition on that, this second one, and the open space recreational area, which we're going to get to, which would be when Jen's proposed condition would be, you know, is still gotta be before you. So, we're just asking this board to approve what it's already approved once before. I can't personally comment. I know there's been talk even today about trails out there and accessing them. I don't have a handle on where the condominium now or proposed land ends, and what trails are on those, and what trails go on to other lots.
Wish I'd asked this back when we did this the first time around, because, I mean, if that's part of the, if that's part of the agreement, and those have the potential to disappear eventually, then...
Glenn, if I may, what are you reading from and where?
This is a letter from, this is from DTC from June 7th.
2018.
And it's about the, it's attachment A. Seven, page seven and eight, six and seven is actually. And this is, the first page was from Millennium Engineers. It's stapled together, but it's from June 5th, 2025.
But this recreational fee is for a project potentially overburdening your existing recreational facilities, correct? I mean, that's what these fees are for, right? So, with the trails, I think, on the next one, I mean, there's always gonna be trails out there that are gonna be accessible for people to walk. Like Tim said, I don't know exactly where they go. I know they go on other property owned by Mr. Shaftmaster, but I don't know exactly where they end and where that transition will be, but there'll always be trails there. So, there'll always be someplace where people will walk.
Well, there will be because of other properties around it, but...
No, because of this, this project will have trails that will be part of the approval.
I understand that. I guess it's, when it says miles of walking and biking trails, that kind of put up a little red flag for me, so, I mean, you don't have miles of trails on the areas around Building A, B, and C, or D.
Yeah.
Which is not that big, but I don't know.
I think the issue, and I respect the question, because it's there.
It's there. I mean, I wouldn't have...
Is that, I believe the offer then and would be today, that Mr. Shaftmaster and his companies have no problem with people using the trails that exist on his properties, wherever they may go in that area. He's not, he's not giving up the right to develop those properties in the future. A lot of it, I mean, I've been out there once and walked it, a lot of it is essentially undevelopable between wetlands and water and steep hills.
Yes.
And whatnot, you know, it's somewhat limited, and even as I understand it, to get to Mr. Carlisle's property. So, I think unless John tells me something different, that the way that should be considered is, as long as it's available and it isn't developed some other way, he'll let, you know, folks go out on those trails.
We spoke about having them mapped and with some signage, so people know where they're going.
Right.
How to get back home. But again, that's probably more the next one.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cloud wants to ask a question.
Excuse me.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it possible, in your development, to add a couple or a few parking spots for people who would like to access those trails? Somewhere that would be easy but unobtrusive to your development?
I think that's more a question for the condo association, I don't know. Because it's ultimately their property, and they want parking on their property.
Fair enough.
Well, they don't own it yet.
Well, they own, there's three buildings, yeah, those people own.
I understand, but that's, I think what he's talking about is the existing approval in front of us, so it's a pretty reasonable request, I think. We've done it multiple times.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're gonna build another 70 feet of road.
Yeah.
Can you put a little pocket off of that 70 feet where four to six cars could be parked and for people to access those trails that might live in another part of town?
Well, my response to that is that, as I understand it, which is a very basic understanding, is that the requirement and thus the waiver request is related to activities on a site that's being developed, not access to another site. He's already offering to allow people to go on to his other sites, but the more you open that up to the public, for instance, the more liability you assume, et cetera. So, I think that while we may be, while Mr. Shaftmaster may be willing to have further consideration about it, we don't want to make that any kind of condition of approval. What's before you is what we are asking this board to approve as is.
Okay.
There is...
I get the question, though.
I respect that, but I will just add.
Yep.
You know, the town of Exeter just bought a new bus, a second bus, for $126,000, or a new van, large van, so people over 55 could participate in the senior activities, of which all these residents will be welcome to, so gee.
Interesting point.
Just saying, gee whiz.
Understood.
Good thinking.
I will say that Riverwoods, when they built the boulders in Hage, added, I think, four or five parking spaces in their entrance road for the public to use to access their trails at Riverwoods, and I believe that the, oh, what was Felder's property across from Aroma Joe's? I never remember the name of it.
Meeting place?
Meeting place. I believe they've also put in a couple places for parking, so it has been done.
I guess if you asked me if I wanted to choose between a couple of parking spaces for trails that may not always be there and aren't well-marked versus whatever the rec impact fee is for the additional seniors who will come into our community and probably use our wonderful rec department that has amazing programming for seniors, would probably want, yeah, versus the more pavement, but this is me.
I wouldn't argue with that. And they do offer a lot, the rec department for seniors.
They do, yeah. So? What do we go from here?
You're still looking for a motion, I think.
I'm looking for a motion. Anybody down there would like to make a motion? Nope, okay.
I think on this one, I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant, going through the criteria, if that's...
Okay.
Like, I'm, like, the justification for the waiver, I think I'm less...
All right, yes, that's a good idea.
The school is a little more straightforward.
Let's review that one. I just have to...
Think of the amount of pickleball these people are gonna be playing. I'm just saying, that's changed, right? In 18, did pickleball even exist? You have to build new pickleball courts now.
It's Rowan's board.
Well, it's unbelievable.
Rowan's has a picket ball.
They do?
Pickleball course.
Yes, they do. Say that five times, line.
Try that.
That's why I don't play it.
There we go. I think. I don't, what I don't remember is how we came up with 75%. I just, I didn't go back and review the last vote, you know, I didn't have the time.
Must have been a struggle to figure that one out.
Yeah. I don't know.
So, I believe in, in attachment A, we're pulling the waiver requirements right now, but I believe in attachment A, Attorney Pessay made a case because similar...
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry.
Because I do hear from it.
Similar projects of the same size had applied for similar reductions, and I think that was part of the argument as to why, and I believe that was covered in that attachment. The waiver requirements from Section 13.7 say, "The planning board shall not approve any waivers from these regulations unless it should make the following findings based upon evidence presented to it in each specific case. The granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare or injures to other property."
I think that's self-evident. We've already been through this for three out of four buildings, actually, four out of four buildings, and it was granted, this building is just being moved.
"The conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought and are not applicable generally to other properties."
So, the, we approached this based upon the submissions by DTC back in 2018 in this board's granting, as evidenced by the letters from the chair back in 18 and 19, respectively. And so, DTC's letter is incorporated into our request. With respect to the impact fee, I'll paraphrase as best I can from that letter, which, as I say, is incorporated. As discussed in detail in previous filings, Willie Creek will be constructing approximately 925,000 recreational improvements, including clubhouse.
Can you elaborate on that? Because it's done now, right?
Yeah, but it was done for four buildings, and we're gonna have four buildings.
But is it, was that what it cost?
Page you want on there?
I don't know.
Does anybody in the room know? Page 10.
Yes, I'm the CFO for Willie Creek, it was over a million dollars.
It was? And it looks like, it looks like the request was for 75%. That's how the number was determined.
That's why it was such an easy decision.
Well, that's why it wasn't 100, or 50, or 40, or 60. So, thank you.
Fair question. So, there's the clubhouse, there's the walking trails, there's a sidewalk down, I'm just reading from what was said back then. A porch or fitness center, onsite sidewalks of 11,700 square feet, a sidewalk down the Tiff Road to Epping Road, building patios and grilling areas, et cetera. And the ask, the basis for the ask was that it should be granted because the AAC will not contribute, oh, that's, that's the school impact fee, so.
He doesn't have a lot on that one.
Pardon?
He doesn't have a lot on this one. It's page 10.
I was hoping for three.
No, it's not much, yeah.
Yes, oh, thank you.
But it is self-evident that what is being provided onsite is atypical of development. That's the bottom line.
Right, and I'll just, because you have it in front of you, but the public doesn't. The anticipated 82,476 in recreation impact fees is a small fraction of the, now we know, a million, over a million recreational improvements, not including the walking and biking trails on the property, and that he's offered off of the property. So, that is the basis for it, and I can't conceive of a factor which would change this board, different people in part, at least, Mr. Plummer's been here forever, so, I know he was here back then. So, you know, we think the same factors apply overall, and we'll go through the rest of them just for the record. And John Shaftmaster mentioned to me while we were considering this, that while I gave a kind of a hard line about creating parking, the other areas that he or his company's own that is available is not posted, people have been going out there for years, whether it's, and he doesn't, he doesn't personally stop anybody, they don't have to be a resident here or not here, but we are very wary of agreements that are gonna affect the existing three building, three condominium buildings and those residents, because if you put parking here, that's gonna be on them, and we don't think that that's appropriate. So, for the record, can we just go through the rest of those?
Yeah, okay, I can say that.
13.7.3, "Because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out."
Same comments apply.
Four, "The granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and the intent of the regulations."
That's it? Yeah, again, same thing, the amount of the cost and nature of the infrastructure that's been offered and has existed previously and will be added meets that requirement.
"The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan."
I don't know if it's lawful to talk about varying the master plan, because the master plan is not law, but leading it to the zoning ordinance, there's nothing about this that would require any kind of zoning relief that I'm aware of.
That's it? Those are the five.
I do understand and respect, and based upon that from back then, do concur with having to go through those specific requirements. And I think we've, so we need a vote on that one before we get to the third one, I think?
So, we approved 75% previously, and now they're asking for, it looks like, my battery died, so I don't have it in front of me, but waiver of the entire...
No, we're asking for 75% again.
Is it 75%?
Yes.
I mean, for me personally, I tend to be... For me personally, I tend to be very willing to grant it because of what they're providing onsite, and it's done. I mean, I don't, I don't know about the parking, additional parking, or guest parking, or I would assume that. I don't know, in the past, anything that has access, we've, we've had parking, and usually it just gets people to it. I don't know if it's don't ask, don't tell with some of these locations, you know, not necessarily granting permission. Maybe it's a different legal precedent, I would assume it probably is. But I, you know, to me, we don't have it now. I understand the request, I respect it, and I think it would be nice, and we have had it. They didn't want to do it. I think the 75% is an appropriate number, so I'm, I'm okay if you make a motion. You making a motion?
Go ahead.
Oh, you need the paper? Here.
Oh, okay.
You probably do need to say the 75% agenda, because it's not in the thing Dave wrote.
Okay, that's what I, that was my question, all right. So after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of Willie Creek Company Planning Board Case Number 22-3 for a waiver from section 11.7.1 of the zoning ordinance regarding payment of impact fees.
About 75%?
That a 75% waiver be approved, or I'm sorry, I did not say it that way. Yeah, no, that is right, a 75% waiver be approved. Period.
Yeah, I don't think there's any conditions on that.
I don't think so.
I'll second.
Okay, moving to second. Roll call again?
Aye.
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 Nay. All right.
Saw that one coming.
All right, that's taken care of reduced recreational, reduced recreational area.
Same, same criteria again.
For this one, can you describe how much recreation area is required and how much is not being provided? Like what, how much reduction are we talking?
I don't have those numbers readily available as an oversight. I can find out how many are required.
Well.
I think the, the concept of the waiver is, sorry, I'm too far away from this.
Thank you.
I think the concept of the waiver is similar to some of the dialogue that we just had, where there are these antillary lots that have the trails and the recreation space that are provided there, more so that this is just a. Waiver from the total square footage per unit that is required.
So, yeah, I think this is the one that I would apply a condition to, that the onsite trail network connections, pedestrian circulation, including the paved sidewalks and trails, be sort of mapped and submitted to planning staff for approval, including trailhead markers, wayfinding, some kind of. My, my understanding is it seems like no one really, there's, we say there's trails, but no one really knows where they are, how you get to them. They're not super accessible, so just clarifying, that would be great.
So that's really vague.
I want to see a plan.
Yeah, but you're saying like, I mean, you could be freaking chasing a squirrel trail.
No, a plan, like.
What do you, what quantifies as a trail, for them to map out on this site?
They're telling us that, they're providing all these trails.
I understand, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm just trying to get to the point of, how do you put that on a map? Like how much, to what extent are we asking them to do that?
On their property.
Yeah, this site or the whole project?
The, well. That's a good question, I was thinking the whole campus.
I know you were.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we can do that.
I don't know if we can do that. Because it all links together.
I know, I know it does. But it's, what we have in front of us is owned by a specific owner or a specific applicant. The other property is not owned by this applicant.
That's a good point, yeah.
So I think you have to limit it to.
You could show connections from the existing property to, I mean, from the proposed property to the existing property, and show how, who's gonna get to this. I think that's the last you can do.
Yeah.
I don't think we can ask, we certainly can't ask them to do other property.
So I would just point out that, if I understood John correctly moments ago, the, the trail, the, most of the trails that are out there, he didn't create them, they've been created by the public, mostly by mountain bikers, you know, hikers, whoever, and I'm talking about that whole area, not just this site. That, those things he doesn't intend to change, I think would be a big ask, and probably not within your purview to go offsite. He's committed to letting the things that have gone on, go on for the foreseeable future, not posted, et cetera. But for instance, the area where Building D was will now be undeveloped, and, you know, he's committed to one of the conditions of the Conservation Commission, which is that it won't be developed, and people can, can, and I don't know if they do now, but certainly can walk out there. And a lot of the ability to recreate out there is not on a marked trail, it's just wherever you want to go. So I don't know how valuable a trailhead type of a map, and I get it, I understand, you know, if I go to the White Mountains, I get lost if I don't have that exact thing, but I just don't know how practical it is here, particularly when this is today a separate piece of property, but will become part of that whole that's sort of excluded from your review at this time, because it's done, for whatever that's worth.
Well, there's a certain amount, a certain amount to be said to, in that there are, the majority of the property is developed. That to be compatible could be to use the same concept, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, to follow up on that, I mean, some of it will be evident, there's gonna be a path from C to D, you know. You know, there's a sidewalk, if you will, you know, down Ray Farmstead Road, et cetera, but beyond that, I honestly, sitting here, I don't know what exists for marked trails of any kind, so I ask you to just consider that in where you are on it.
I think we're kind of at a disadvantage because we haven't walked out there. Maybe we did when, before this was all built, but I haven't been out, I've driven, driven in to the site once, and that was, probably took less than a minute to do that, so I don't really have an appreciation for what, what is there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think for me, it's just contradictory to say, oh, we need this waiver because we're providing all this great open space, and these trails, this trail network, but we're not gonna tell you where it is.
It's pretty common for us to have it on a plan.
Yeah.
It's more common than not, so the request is not at all unusual. I personally just think it needs to be limited to the property in front of us.
Yeah.
Which I think Jen.
Agrees with it, I think so too.
Yeah.
I don't think, but I, I understand.
But I don't know how practical a request that is, given the conditions that are being described.
Right. What did your, what was your original thinking in your wording?
I was originally thinking that there's, I was thinking campus-wide, it should just be sort of like a pedestrian circulation plan that we could look at, and, you know, maybe look at, oh, let's connect the dot here.
Right.
To create a loop, walking loop or something.
Right.
I mean, really, my, where this is coming from is just the, the fact that this is a, you know, 55-plus community, and you need to get a, you know, a lot of people have dogs, you want to go out and walk your dog or whatnot, it's like, where are you gonna go? Are you gonna walk in the parking lot? Like, I would love to see on a plan where you can walk around, so you don't have to get in your car.
Well, from, from public comment earlier, they spoke about. Marty did, whoop, he moved. Concrete to connect the, the other, apparently the rest, there are the walkways are concrete.
He was talking between two buildings, I think, C and D.
Yeah, between C and D, and it'll probably be pavement, not concrete, if we can.
Like a soft surface trail, right?
Well, yeah, the, we wanted something hard, so it's easy for people to walk on, but that becomes difficult with ADA, because there's some side hills and everything like that, so we haven't figured that out completely yet, and obviously the Concom would like to see it remain as natural as possible.
Right.
So there's a balance.
What's the, what's the threshold before you have to get into ADA issues? What could it be up to, do you know?
There's differences for trails versus sidewalks, so how you treat it affects the regulations you have to abide by. I don't know exactly where the threshold, where the changes are, but I know there's a whole host of.
I would think, given the elevations, triggering sidewalk ADA rules would be onerous.
We can't do a sidewalk ADA, absolutely.
Yeah, I think you have to keep it at a trail, and as usable as possible by all, inclusive. That's something we're trying to do, right, is not exclude people who are limited in their mobility.
Yeah.
Especially given the nature of who's gonna be living here.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
There's a material you can put into stone dust, so you pave it with stone dust, and you put this like stabilizer in it, and it actually makes the stone dust kind of hard, but it still can absorb water, and it's nice, we use it.
Stuff they use for pavers, between pavers now?
That's different, that's poly-sand.
Yeah, it is different?
Yeah, that's almost like a.
It's interesting.
I was on the Concom sidewalk the other day.
The whole world out there in aggregate.
Between Buildings C and D, it's not an easy walk.
No.
Even with the new bridge, it's not an easy walk, you know, there's some side hills and things like that, so it really needs to be thought out.
Yeah.
You know, because like I said, I mean, these are gonna be people my age walking it, and it's gonna be not, not very stable sometimes.
Right. And that may be just in practical purposes, they're gonna be walking on a sidewalk instead. I mean, that's just, if you can't go through the wooded area, you can't go through the wooded.
There is no sidewalk there.
Well, yeah, the road.
Yeah, all right.
Your idea is a good one, though, that, that material, they've used that at Riverwoods as well.
Have they? Yeah.
It's.
Pretty good stuff.
It's pretty good stuff, and it's stable, it doesn't seem to be affected by heavy rain. It's, it really, I was actually kind of worried about it when I first saw it, because I thought they'd put material in it that, crossing wetlands that shouldn't be used in a wetland area, but it's.
Porous, yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk with the landscape architect about that, certainly, a person should know.
So, I don't know, I mean, I guess my other concern about this, just going away from the condition that we're discussing, is the reduced recreational area. What, I don't understand what we're trying to approve, what they're asking us to approve, because we don't have any quant, like how much is the reduction?
Yeah.
What's required, like?
Jen?
Yeah.
The, the requirement is 400 square feet per unit, they got 32 units, so they need 12,800 square feet of recreational space.
Do you know how much they're providing?
No, they, they, I don't believe, you can ask the applicant, but I didn't see any quantities on that.
Anybody ready to make a motion to reduce the recreational area?
So, if I may, again, I'm putting on my, I don't know what hat. And I was just gonna read what Dave just said, because he had communicated it to me, so. I don't know the number, but recreation area would also, already exist, and is proposed with the sidewalk that's proposed. Now, you get to what part of that is on this lot, what part of it is on other, you know, on the rest of the condominium property. And also the walkway from C to D, beyond that, the overall development, which this will be added to, has these other amenities that have been identified, which this will then be part of, because this will become a part of that condominium, and therefore will be all one common area. So the area upon which the clubhouse is located, and the other issues, things that I read off of, of DTC's letter from, you know, back in around 2018, would also impact it, I just can't give you a square foot number. I'm not able to calculate.
We have enough area available, I honestly just don't know what your definition of recreational area is. Does it have to be improved, is it?
It can be a picnic area.
With some trails through it and some.
Open space, it's really open space, that's.
We have that on, we have that on.
Movie area.
Generally, just generally open space, a lot of times it's very unimproved.
Yeah.
And like a little lawn area to throw.
Right.
Put your dog out or something.
Right, the issue we have is that most of the area we have available is in a buffer, one, a wetland buffer or the shoreline buffer. Actually, mostly it's in the wetland buffers, so we'd have to just confer with the Concom about. I would assume they're putting some picnic tables out and a little grill or something wouldn't upset too many people, but I don't want to take that, I don't want to assume that either, you know.
We do have the provisions in the plan, though it's not adequately shown, I think actually the best place to show it is the landscape plan, ironically. Where you can see the patio coming off the back here, that, you know, the area is dedicated, it may shift to be in a different location, but that's a single, you know, meant to be a large grilling space for residents to be able to do some of that, have outdoor dining. And then there are also some patios off the insides of the building that are available as well, that add to kind of the wooded areas that they can recreate and walk on.
And then if I may, there's the balance between not wanting to clear any more trees than you have to, and clearing trees to create, you know, lawn areas to recreate on, I don't know how that balance would be determined. But going, again, I'm recognizing that when this happened back in 2018 and 19, we weren't talking about this particular lot, but just to, again, state, this will be part of that. There was a roughly 3,500 square foot clubhouse, 11,735 square feet of sidewalks, 3,120 sidewalk down the Tiff Road to Epping Road, again, on that other lot, that'll now go up to D. Four building patios and grilling areas totaling 3,320 square feet, and passive recreation areas totaling 16,000. Now, again, I understand the distinction between the existing three units, which was approved as four, and, and this one. Kat has just mentioned some others, so I think there's going to be very adequate and expansive overall recreation area for the condominium association when this is done, but I can't tell you how much of that is on this particular portion, this particular lot.
Okay.
Very little, is the answer, but, and that being said, let's make a motion, because it's getting late.
Yeah.
Yep.
You got my sheet. You're gonna give it back, you don't want to make this motion, right? So we're on the.
It's the one not circled.
Reduced Recreation Area Motion.
Yes.
"After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of Willie Creek Company Planning Board Case 22-3 for a waiver from section 11.3.4 of the Site Plan and Subdivision Regulations to provide less than the required recreational area per dwelling unit be approved."
Is there a second? Sam's second, all right, I'm voting tonight. All right, Sam, why don't you start with you with roll call?
I vote A. Yes.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
No.
Okay, two?
A four.
Four, motion carries. Motion carries.
So, now we'll address conditional use permit requirements? Yes?
Yes.
Kat?
Yep. All right. So, we'll start with the wetland conditional use permit. And my lead-in note to these is that obviously there are some things that we are trying to adjust for the better, and so the final impacts have not been actualized in the applications. And. Right, but we expect what's presented in these plans to be the maximum that we would see throughout this process. So, the criteria for the wetlands conditional use permit, I have to make sure I do this in the right order, three different documents, so. That the proposed design is permitted in the underlying zoning district, which the, provided the multifamily site is approved, is. No alternative design which does not impact a wetland or wetland buffer, or which has less detrimental impact on the wetland or wetland buffer is feasible. This is an odd instance, because obviously we originally saw the building C to building D impacts being stated, and it's felt that the current access that is proposed is the better one for life and safety concerns because of the length of, length of the access from Epping Road. The open bottom box culvert that will occur at the crossing over existing Watson Brook is a great improvement to the deteriorating metal culvert that's already there. The new structure also negates the need from a previously indicated entrance off Commerce Way for during construction, because we're removing on any of that construction traffic from buildings A, B, and C. And so, for those reasons, we believe that no alternative design that has less detrimental impact is present. A wetland scientist has provided an impacted valuation that includes the functions and values of the wetland and assessment, I'm sorry, I missed a comma. Functions and values of the wetlands, an assessment of the potential project-related impacts, and concluded to the extent feasible that the proposed impact is not detrimental to the value and function of the wetland or the greater hydrologic system. Brendan Quigley from Gove Environmental has submitted a stamped report on the fundamental functional analysis that has been provided as a part of the packet to fulfill this requirement. That the design, construction, and maintenance of the proposed use will, to the extent feasible, minimize detrimental impact of the wetland or the wetland buffer. The primary wetland impacts, that's not on the right screen, the primary wetland impacts that we're seeing here are those to bring this access road in and through. Outside of those particular two wetland buffer impacts, there are not many. Obviously, we've talked previously about this area over here, where we would like to make this crossing more accessible, and then obviously that will have some wetland buffer impacts with it as well, and we've stated that we are going to try and limit those as much as to the extent feasible. The applicant may propose an increase in wetland buffers elsewhere on the site that surround a wetland of greater equal size and greater or equal functional value than the impacted wetland. In this particular case, and as is documented by the Conservation Commission's Conditions of Recommendation, the area that this is happening is the former building delocation with that perpetual, their recommendation for a condition that this area, which is up against a pond and kind of a higher level wetland ecosystem, be protected from development within the condo association's documentation. In cases where the proposed use is temporary or where construction activity disturbs areas adjacent to the immediate use, the applicant has included a restoration proposal revegetating any disturbed area within the buffer. Would the, the goal to restore the site as nearly as possible to the original grade following the condition. The wetland crossing that we've proposed is, as previously stated, an open bottom box. It is bounded by retaining walls on either side of the road, so here and here, so there isn't a whole lot of side slope impact in the buffer, because the retaining wall handles that. To the extent feasible, where vegetation will be required, we will revegetate as necessary. And a formal plan for particularly, it's right here. Brendan has agreed that we will take a closer look at that and make sure that we provide the documentation needed. And then number eight is that all required, required permits shall be obtained from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Water Supply and Pollution Control Division under New Hampshire RSA 485A, Section 17. The New Hampshire Wetlands Board under New Hampshire RSA 43A, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. These permits have not been executed at this time, but they will be executed prior to construction, and we believe final approval based on the conditions of approval that are likely to be indicated tonight.
Should we go right into the shoreline COP requirements? Excuse me?
No, we usually do them individual.
Okay.
Yeah. Any questions about that one? Do we have a motion?
I, I can make a motion if.
Okay.
Aaron lets me borrow, thank you. So, I'm just going to, I'm going to add these two conditions from the conservation conditions. After reviewing the criteria for a wetlands conditional use permit, I move that the request of Willie Creek Company, Planted Wood Case Number 22-3, for a conditional use permit be approved with the following conditions. To reduce the impacts associated with the pedestrian trail crossing, or I'm sorry, the pedestrian trail connecting building C and building D, and retain natural and limited use buffers to the greatest extent possible, and to protect from further development the originally proposed building delocation in perpetuity within the condominium documentation.
Where would we put the salt?
That's under shoreline.
That's under shoreline?
Yeah, minimize salting, because that's closer to the shoreline. Creek.
Second?
I second.
Thank you. Well, let's go ahead and vote, so, Sam?
Yes.
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 Stan?
We got five, zero. Aaron had to step out for a minute, but that's okay, so I'll call that motion has been approved.
Kat will address shoreline COP next.
Okay.
Now, we're going to look at, I'm going to take his sheet. Conditional, excuse me, continues, the, continued, conditional use permit, shore hand, shoreline, please.
Okay, so the conditional use permit for the shoreline, as we've kind of already covered, carries the impacts for both the access road through the wetland and shoreline area, and then also the impacts undertaken by grading and stormwater management features on the site. As previously stated, we are going to try to minimize the extent feasible these impacts by the reduction in parking, and try and maintain, continue to have as many temporary shoreline impacts as possible. The conditions are as follows. The proposed use will not detrimentally affect the surface water quality of the adjacent river, or tributary, or otherwise result in unhealthful conditions. The majority of these, as we've kind of already just covered, are necessary for the construction of the stormwater management system, or portions of the pavement to be able to access the building itself. It will be, water quality will be protected by the 100-foot building setback, which the building complies with, and then also you'll have additional treatment of all stormwater runoff in the new stormwater management system. Grated slopes will be restored when native seed mix were feasible, and we will use best management practices and erosion control throughout the construction of the site. The proposed use will discharge no wastewater on-site, other than that normally discharged by domestic wastewater disposal systems, and will not involve onsite storage or disposal of hazardous or toxic waste as herein defined. The project is served by sanitary sewer, and so all of those flows will go to the town's treatment plant, so there will be no hazardous waste or sanitary waste that's discharged on-site. The proposed use will not result in undue damage to spawning grounds or wildlife habitat. Brendan said this quite well. Spawning habitat, to the extent it exists, and other wildlife habitat with destruction of the stream channel will be preserved and likely improved by the open bottom box culvert. The impacts for grading will be vegetated using native seed mix and planting plans, and this will largely restore this to a native condition while also allowing us to maintain the stormwater elements, and therefore this is considered to be minimal. The proposed use complies with use regulations defined in Article 9.3.4 Extranet Shoreland Protecting, Protecting, sorry, Protection District Ordinance Use Regulations and all the applicable articles of this section, which it does, and those are noted mostly because we are compliant with the zoning ordinance and the shoreline protection ordinance as written within the zoning ordinance. The design and construction of the proposed use will be consistent with the intent and purposes set forth in Article 9.3.1 Extranet Shoreland Protected District Ordinance, say that five times fast, please, authority and purpose.
That passed.
Pass.
The purpose of the shoreline protecting, protection district is to protect, maintain, and enhance the water qualities of the Swamp Scott River, which this is tributary to, and also to conserve and protect aquatic and terrestrial habitat associated within the river areas. To preserve and enhance both the recreational and aesthetic values associated with the natural shoreline and river involvement, which we believe that we are doing here by adding this crossing, creating, you know, these trails off to the side, and then also trying to restore this to its natural state as best as we can upon completion of the project. That's it. And that will be formally written as an attachment to the shoreline use permit, which it is currently not, as per the requirements of the permit itself.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You've got some conditions?
Conditions, yes. And I have a few, I may add a few at the end. Stay tuned. All right.
You're making the motion.
After reviewing the criteria for a shoreline conditional use permit, I move that the request of Willie Creek Company, Planted Wood Case Number 22-3, for a conditional use permit be approved with the following conditions. First condition, to reduce parking and associated impacts within the shoreline buffer to the greatest extent possible. Condition two, that an additional landscape plan be suppo, see, that an additional landscape plan be supplied specifying seed mix within the disturbance areas. And I'd like to add to that, and the submitted plant list be revised to include only native plants. Number three, that temporary impacts within shoreline buffer meet 85% revegetation upon completion of project. And number four, to minimize salting on the access road specifically at the wetland crossing, and to add signage at the wetland crossing to this effect.
Who was that last part, add signage wet to this effect?
To this effect, yeah.
Low salt.
No salt there, or low salt. Reduce salt there.
Did you want something about snow blowing there?
I think you made a note of that, to reduce it as.
Yes.
As possible. I don't know if that would include perhaps some kind of a barrier fencing to prevent that from happening, but it's a thought.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Look into that.
Yep. Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Dean, okay. Shall we start with you this time?
No.
No, okay.
I volunteer the first few.
Get Aaron because he may have to.
I have to go, yes. Yes, I'm on record, yes. Aye.
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 Thank you. Six oh, that passes. Now, we're down to lot line adjustment motion. And she doesn't have to give a whole lot of information about that.
Do you want the quick?
Why do you want the lot line adjustment?
I'll just, no, I'll just put it up, and I won't say a word. How's that sound?
She's being literal. Enough said.
Less is more.
Enough not said.
But here we are.
I would like a bit of a description. I can never really understand these things.
So, well, and this one is particularly hard because it's an odd shape, and there's a road in the middle of it. The existing lot is configured as such, and I'm going to do a terrible job, but I'm going to try and keep a straight line here. So, we look something like this right now, and it comes down the edge of Ray Farmstead Road, and then comes back out and connects back on the Epping Road frontage. And what we're proposing to do is remove this lot line to come out like this, and then come back down and around. And so, you'll still have this section, you know, obviously owned by the town, this section of right-of-way that will be included, and then this new parcel, which is where building D will sit. The new parcel, or the, the two parcels here, one comes from the larger lot owned by CKT, which is lot number nine, and then the second one comes from, I think it's eight dash one, so parcel A is from eight dash one. And those in total combined to be, I think it's just over 13 or 15 acres, to allow us to place building D.
Can you word him for that?
Yes.
This is.
That's 15.75 acres, sorry, I had to get it into a font that I could read.
You can do that?
Want to do that?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Chair, I move that the request of Willie Creek Company, Planted Wood Case Number 22-3, for a lot line adjustment, approval be approved.
I like that you added Mr. Chair at the beginning of that. That was a nice touch.
It's all right.
It was.
I'm trading him, I'm.
Line kind of went.
Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
It's okay, thank you.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries?
This is the big one.
Here's the biggie.
Lot of conditions.
Do you like speed? Go ahead, I have not closed a public session yet.
You never did.
It's a touching, touching call thing.
It is, I know, I noticed.
Again, Marty Kennedy, seven Wally Creek Road. I had suggested earlier in the, in the meeting that you schedule a sidewalk. I'm going to again suggest that. I think you would all be in a position to be much more informed of all the issues by simply going out and taking a good look at the site.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Well, I just want to say, with that being said, we're on the site plan at this point, so we're kind of like bringing it all back, right? And I'm just going through my own notes from this hearing. And I'm just going through my own notes from this hearing. Conservation had a site walk, and they gave us their conditions. I know previously the members here, I know I was on the site, I think Lang was there, and I think Gwen was there. It was a different framework in terms of what buildings, but I've been out there a few times. I've been out there since it's been developed. I think a lot of what I heard from a butter comments, or I guess we call them butters, was a lot of concern about the Carlyle property, actually, and how this relates to the Carlyle property, the abutting property with the underlying easement, and the driveway going over that easement and how that could impact the owners in the condominiums. And primarily, I think the primary concern I heard was the financial. I think those are matters that would realistically be addressed by probably this board and potentially the zoning board if, if and when Carlyle comes forward with a project. I mean, that would be part of their application. That's extremely speculative at this point, right? I mean, it's, we've approved projects that have never been built.
Yeah.
To try to vote on this project that's in front of us with what could happen next door, I just don't think it's appropriate. I understand the concerns, and I think they're justified. I also think that it would seem to be if, I don't know legally the rights, we had an attorney speak on it, but he didn't seem 100% on it. I don't legally know the rights that Carlyle would have just to jam his access down this board, or if we could, you know, require it go at that point to a public-specified road. I don't think we can do that now. Because that was something I thought about, but I don't think we can require them to build this driveway to public road specs. So I'm hearing the concern, and I think it's legitimate. I think we have rules and regulations that we have to follow by.
I don't think we can cause that to happen.
I don't know the answer to Marty's question about, did you guys go back to technical review?
We did not.
Yeah.
And our proposal is that this would be a conditional approval with those kind of conditions.
TRC, working with TRC.
Well, working with Underwood.
Yeah.
If they can figure out how they want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was it. I think Marty brought up a bunch of legitimate issues, some of them unfortunately I don't think are under the purview of this board and this hearing. I just wanted to speak on that. I think it's important. So we're on to that part of our hearing. It's a lot of conditions. I'm going to guess that Dave didn't write them all down this time?
Well, we have ten already down, so we're going to start with eleven.
Yes, we do. I got to nineteen.
Does that include the standard ten?
Uh, yes, it does. The first ten are standard.
First ten are standard, and we will read them.
I may not have them all, because nobody, we didn't really, generally Dave starts writing them down, and we work that together with his help.
So I'm feeling like I'm on an island right now. Who's good at this?
Well, let's just, do you want to go through your nine?
Sure. Yep.
And then I can?
You guys can help me word it, okay? And fill in, because I don't think I have them all. I think there's at least one that I'm missing.
Okay.
So I have, well, do you want it, should I read the first ten?
I'll read the first ten.
Okay.
We'll start with.
Warm it up.
An electronic as-built plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in DWG or DFX, excuse me, DXF file format, and NAD in 1983 State Plane, New Hampshire, FIPS, 12,800 feet coordinates. Two, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. Following must be submitted for review and prior to the pre-construction meeting. One, the SWPPP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, if applicable, and two, a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Number three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Four, the annual operations and maintenance report in the stormwater operations and maintenance manual shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually or on or before January 31st. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval and included in the condominium documents. Number five, all comments in the review letters from Underwood Engineers dated June 10, 2025, and the TRC letter dated April 9, 2025, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner and town engineer or the designees prior to the signing of the final plans. Six, all condominium documents, including a declaration and bylaws, shall be submitted to the town planner for review and prior approval, review and approval prior to signing the final plans. Condominium documents to include maintenance requirements for all stormwater practices shown on the plans and other applicable conditions of this approval. Review of the condominium documents by the town's attorney shall be at the applicant's expense. Seven, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees will be paid, including but not limited to sewer and water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, for instance, including third-party inspections, close for instance, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. Number eight, all landscaping shown on plans shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced no later than the following growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid. Number nine, all lighting, including security lights, should be downlit and shielded so that no direct light is visible from adjacent properties or roadways. And ten, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAPP online municipal tracking tool, for instance, https://ptapp.unh.edu/. The PTAPP submittal must be accepted by the PDPW to the pre-construction meeting.
Good job.
There.
Before you proceed with the others, does anybody have an extra copy? Because we haven't seen what those might be. I don't know if there's.
We can certainly get one to you. Mine has too many notes to give you.
And that's the one I want.
I know. All right, so what we're discussing right now is potential conditions.
Additional conditions.
We haven't really made a motion, but we can do the conditions and just outline them. So I had number 11, age restricted as previously discussed. Kind of goes without saying. I don't want to get more specific than that, I don't think. I think that one's okay.
Do you need that one? Does it mean?
I think it's redundant, but I heard from a lawyer today that it was a good idea to have, so I want to put it in there. Number 12, disapproval is considered condition subsequent, meaning there would be no more planning board meetings required provided the applicant adheres to the conditions of this approval. It's getting in deep water, putting that one together. Number 13.
Oh, that was 12?
That was, that was 12. Ah, yeah, because we started with 10, so 13.
You're right, you got the numbers right.
I have plan, shall adhere to the notes by the Conservation Commission, letter dated June 12th. It says 2024, but I think it's 2025.
Yes.
And I provided my copy of that to the applicant. That's why I don't have it.
You can't have it back.
Number 14, if possible, sidewalks be added to the interior of the site. And I'm leaving it that vague because it just, it's something we're trying to do with our projects in general, and certainly with the age of this one, I think it makes a lot of sense, and I'm just saying if possible. Fifteen is going to be a tougher one, because it relates to that trail between Buildings C and D. So I want it to be improved, but I don't want to make it, I want it to be improved, but I don't want to see it trigger ADA
ADA.
ADA requirements of a sidewalk, but I would like it to be improved as reasonably up to that threshold.
To the satisfaction of the Conservation Commission.
There you go. To the satisfaction of the Conservation Commission or their representatives. I don't want to make you have to go to a meeting for that, just.
Well, the, what's, what's your position? You know?
Yes, I know who you're talking about.
Satisfactory to town.
Kristen?
Satisfactory to.
Yeah, Kristen.
Yeah.
Ms. Murphy, right?
Yeah.
Conservation and Sustainability Planner.
Thank you, David.
Ah, see?
He's still awake. Speaks from on high. Thanks for letting me struggle, Dave. Sixteen, this was an odd one, but I thought it was, because of the construction, I would like to see him make sure that, to minimize the impact on Building A during and post-construction. Seventeen, I want, I would like to require the applicant to meet with the existing condominium owners and try to satisfy their concerns. I want to leave that vague, but I think that's in good faith. These people bought into this project. This is a change to what they bought. If I was next to this, and I wasn't going to be previously, I think that's a change. So I think it's reasonable for them to meet with them. Eighteen, that there would be 10 additional canopy trees added to the plan. I think I stole one of Jen's there.
At least a minimum of 10, did you say?
Yeah, I did.
Should we request 3-inch caliper?
Sure. 3-inch caliper. Number 19, an appropriate lighting plan be submitted for review by town party.
I'd like to add to that, that shows no light trespass on wetlands.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I have 20.
Before you proceed, I'm sorry, Erin. Submitted to whom?
Town representatives, Underwood Engineering realistically.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. And then just 20, I have subject, all conditions and final plan sets subject to Underwood Engineers' agreement and review, acceptance essentially. I don't want to make it onerous, but I think it's appropriate, given the fluidity of the application. That's what I have.
Is that the same as, as making sure that all the requests of an Underwood Engineer and Town Engineer have been satisfied? Is that the same as what you're saying?
I think so.
The specific number five, it relates just to UBI's letters dated June 10th and the TRC letter dated April 9th. What I understood from what Erin said is any additional plans, like the lighting plan also, which are coming, I guess.
Right.
The updated landscape plan needs to be reviewed.
Yeah. And we'll, like I said, they don't have to come back here, but they do have to go back to town parties or representatives. That's what I have.
I would like to have 121 being a complete landscape plan, a completed landscape plan, that is illustrating the plants are, what I think we just have a rough draft?
Yeah.
Now, let's see it in technicolor with the bushes and plants, and these trees will be planted.
Technicolor is probably just a term. I don't think that was a requirement.
Sylvia, thank you.
We had talked about snow storage. Maybe that's part of the landscape.
Oh, to be included in the landscape plan.
Yeah, there you go.
Boy, you're sharp. It's good. See how we put these things together? To include.
So is that number 22?
Twenty-one, we're adding it to the landscape, yeah.
Could you go through, this is, could you go through and make sure that your plan index is, is correct with the site? Because they're, they're not right, right now.
Yeah, there's a, there's a double of building site plan instead of grading and drainage. At least that, I know of that one. There may be another one as well.
There are a couple here that need to be corrected.
While you're thinking, I have a question for everyone. We've provided condominium documents, declarations and bylaws. They've already been approved for A, B, and C. I don't know if they need to go to council to review, but I don't want to leave it hanging if you think that needs to be addressed. They're the same, the ones we turned in are the ones we did for A, B, and C, so.
Then that's probably what we can say, right? As long as there's no changes, then we can skip that. I would be okay with that. It's the same thing, you know? As long as nothing changes, as long as nothing changes, good to go.
Other than?
Unnecessary redundancy.
Other than the units number.
Right, right. And the other ones?
Get on mine.
So we had 21 conditions?
21 conditions.
Reduction of parking is, I mean, there are.
That's in the conservation letter, for sure.
That's in there, too.
Yeah, it's definitely on there.
Yep, you're right.
All right, so I will make a motion unless Jen wants to keep, have you made every motion? No, Gwen made at least one, right? Did you make a motion?
I did.
Want to do this one?
I'll do it.
All right.
I move that the request of Willie Creek Company Planning Board Case Number 22-3 for multi-family site plan approval be approved with the conditions as outlined by the board.
Second. Can you vote?
Yeah, we're going to vote. I just think, well, I just think for a second about that.
Okay.
Ponder it. And when you're ready, Gwen.
You're all looking at me?
You're in the hot seat.
I made a motion. You're next, Erin.
Well, you have to, you have to vote.
I'm thinking.
You're thinking. I will say yes.
I'm just going to look at this.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Six zero.
Don't be so enthusiastic.
Yeah, that was close to a no. I could feel it right here.
I found a maybe coming.
I don't know.
Thank you all very much. You've been very patient tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Well, we got organized now, didn't we?
Yeah, you got to go. Yeah, you gotta go back, all right, so. You're in for a minute anyway. You want to hit the gavel, Marty?
Nancy, let's still have business. I gotta get the crank together to run the elections for the, for a month later. Thank you for your earlier suggestion.
We're a team. We're a team. Take care. All right, good luck. Yep, take care yourself.
Good luck, thank you.
Chris, good to see you. Take care, man.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right.
All right, we have to elect officials, excuse me, officers.
Sam, Sam looks like, Sam looks like a president to me. He's a president right there. He's leaving the room. We got a new chair, everybody. Is that the way it works? You got off the hook. You're off the hook.
Hey, hey, look at that.
It's not, I thought that was what happened. You leave the room, you get voted, right?
Especially when it's your first day.
You left the room twice during the meeting.
I did.
Keep track of that.
Yeah, well.
Well, we need to have a chair and a vice chair and clerk.
I don't know, where's Pete?
Who else are elected?
That's it, other than committees, but committees are.
We don't have to worry about committees tonight.
Yeah, probably not to that.
But I just get our, because we.
We're overdue, aren't we?
Shut it in this last month.
Yeah.
But we didn't leave, so there. I figured you guys would rather take the heat off of.
I want to nominate Lang. If he'll continue on as chair, I think he's been doing an excellent job.
If anybody wants a seat, they're more welcome to it, you know? But people say they like what I do, so I don't know.
I think you're a good balance. I think you do a good job.
Still sane and.
Yeah. And when I have to poke you, you respond.
That's good.
I second that nomination.
Aye.
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 Ah, I would nominate.
You are, you are it again. I, I can do it. My personal life is a little crazy at the moment, that's why I apologize for having to step out a couple times, but I'll do it as long as I can. Hopefully, nothing gets real, but.
Okay.
I second it.
Do it. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
You don't have to vote, you're it. So we need a clerk.
Now we need a clerk. Now, John has done that in the past.
He has.
He used to keep that chair warm, should we, because he's not here.
I would ask if the new parties have interest, or I'm not trying to exclude any existing parties.
Look at me, I can't. I can't do that.
Are you guys interested? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. What are they doing?
Just, there's not much there. I think you have to be able to.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think you have, you have to be a regular.
Are they, what, how many members do we have? How many members do we actually have?
We have a full board because.
Because Pete hasn't stepped off?
Pete has not stepped down. His term ends 27 or something?
All right, so we need to communicate with him. Because by absent, for not coming, he's.
Yeah.
You know, at that, at this point, I think that's a formality.
So we have.
So we do need to get on that, because.
Yes.
Yes.
We have alternates that should be moved up.
Let's put these on and let's work.
Right.
We're talking about Pete.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it in my notes to talk to Russ about that in the morning.
It's been quite a while.
And if not, we have a slackboard meeting Monday night, and I will ask the chair.
Yeah.
Yes, what, what we need.
Think the lunch was kind of the end for him.
It was, but he hasn't.
Exactly. Oh, he still shows up.
Something that I just want to.
Yeah, closure.
Discuss the next steps. I don't want to, I don't want to say what they were tonight, but we do need to do something. And actually, Marty.
Yeah, I.
Asked me about that early.
Oh, yeah. All right, so I guess you guys can't do it. So then it's.
John.
You or you? Just clerk, clerk. Clerk's not that big of a.
Yeah.
Take notes, keep us on track, I guess.
No, because you have a, you have a secretary, recording secretary, so that's what, without one, that's what the clerk would do. The clerk is the third person in line to run a meeting.
Okay. And I think they also usually keep us somewhat on track. At least that's what I think Pete did at times. I don't know if that's the official role, but.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe help us keep track of committee stuff, because we should be discussing that with the potential turnover. You guys can be on committees, I'm certain of that, because I was when I was an alternate. Because we're all supposed to be on a committee, a planning board related committee. It gets more fun. But they're, they're pretty good. And actually, I will say for the master plan oversight committee, we could use additional members, because Pete was on that.
Yep.
And it's really just been me and John for a while, and it's.
I'm on, I'm on.
You are on, you are on, okay. All right, good. Because that's a good one. That's a really important one, too.
And Pete, it's also the planning board representative, the housing advisor.
Yes, yes, so we need somebody there.
That's Friday morning, it's the.
Which one is that?
Housing advisor.
Housing, yep.
Sorry, allergies are kicking in. So we meet tomorrow morning. It's the second Friday of the month at 8:30 here, 8:30 in the morning.
And John is on the heritage, heritage commission, whatever, yeah.
Okay, so is there anything else you want to do tonight?
So do we have a clerk, John?
Why do the agenda here?
Because he's not here.
Land use regulations.
I like that method. Clerk, who's your clerk?
Who's my clerk, yes.
You need a clerk.
That's the person who always keep it, yeah.
I'm going to nominate Jen Martel for clerk, if you'll accept.
I can't, I can't, I don't like straight. Never mind all this.
She's working on the park committee right now.
That's true.
So could I make a suggestion? Yeah, you go ahead, because I think you were going to just suggest. Wait until John comes back.
We'll do it, okay.
We can leave that vacant.
Okay.
Right now, he is the clerk, right?
He is, yep, yep.
I think to pull the rug out from under him and.
Right, to see if he's interested in.
Supposed to give it to him, so we probably should, that's the best way to go.
Right, and then by then, maybe if we have Pete Cameron situation, find out, and you'll have an alternate that can replace that.
True, that's a good point.
You have some options.
That's a good point, yep. That's a great idea. Okay, leave that one alone. You want a motion to adjourn?
I don't know if Dave had any other comments. Are you still there, Dave?
I am, and I am all set.
Hey, how did I do with those 10 conditions?
You did fantastic.
Have you got anything?
I don't, I don't, I don't think I have to do them in the future.
It was helpful to have them right now.
That's for sure.
Did I miss that?
We didn't do it.
We didn't touch them.
Table them.
Table them, yep.
Well, no, I didn't, but I just turned the table till the end of this meeting, not till the next one, so.
Well, thank you, thank you for attending tonight, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
We stand adjourned. Thank you for answering, buddy.
No, I did not find.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.